This evening, Board of Education meeting is hereby called to order. We'll start with the Act of Reverence and Pledge allegiance to the flag.
And the pledge will be led by Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have acceptance of minutes from our previous meetings, August 23rd, September 6th, and our special meeting September 11th. Board members have received these minutes in their packets. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
Can move, second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, please say aye. The ayes have it, those minutes are approved.
I'm voting no.
Okay, no on the 6th, 11th, and 23rd, Commissioner Elliott. No recognition, we do have some speakers on agenda item. I'll call the speakers up, and if you could just come to the podium and state your name for the record. And then, once your time has elapsed, you will hear the beep, and at that point, I would ask you to just conclude your comments. Our first two speakers, our first speaker is Linda Fraser, and Linda Fraser will then be followed by Howard Eagle. Is Ms. Fraser and Mr. Eagle in the house? Good evening.
My name's Linda Fraser. I'm here on behalf of the Eglisea Educational Centers. I have a letter written by my son, Aaron. I won't read the entire letter, he did address a letter to the board and to you, Mr. Vargas, so I have a copy of that letter for you. Excuse me. It says, "Dear Superintendent Vargas and distinguished members of the Board of Education, it is my profound pleasure to offer you this letter in support of the wonderful work of Eglisea Educational Centers and as inspirational CEO Karen Eglisea does to cultivate the talents of our young urban scholars." Excuse me. I'm a proud graduate of the Rochester City School District. I attended World of Inquiry School for Elementary School and School of the Arts for Middle School and High School. After graduating from the School of the Arts in 2006, I attended Harvard University. I graduated from Harvard in 2010 with a BA degree in Philosophy. I'm currently in my last year of law school at Cornell University. I am proud to report that I've accepted a position as an associate attorney with Harris Beach where I began my legal career upon graduation. I'm gonna stop there and give you the letter and just read another paragraph from him that says, "I encourage the Rochester City School District to form a meaningful and significant partnership with Karen Eglisea and Eglisea Educational Centers. Eglisea Educational Centers is an exemplary organization with an unrivaled history of success. Eglisea Educational Centers employs a diverse staff filled with professionals who are dedicated, brilliant, enthusiastic, and can relate to the hurdles that urban students face." And I wrote something myself as a parent, as a parent of a child that benefited from the Eglisea Educational Centers. At the time, there was only one. I strongly urged the district to reconsider the center staying in the city. When Aaron attended Eglisea's Educational Centers, there was only one site on Dewey Avenue, and between my husband and myself working, it was a struggle getting him back and forth, but I would do it again in a heartbeat if I had to. But now having Eglisea Educational Centers throughout the city is a great benefit to our city youth along with the parents, and God knows, our youth could use such a benefit with its conveniences. Eglisea Centers offers so many opportunities for our youth that would otherwise not be available to them. Opportunities that will allow our students to get the help they need to prepare for their future. I don't know about you, but personally, I'm tired of seeing our youth wasting away on the corners and being killed before their 20th birthday. Please, let's keep all the help we can available for our students. Thank you, and this is the letter.
Yes, you can hand that to the clerk, Ms. Fraser. Thank you so much, Ms. Fraser, and I'm thrilled that Aaron is coming back home to Rochester, so.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I hear he's going to Harris Beach, and I could use a little help.
I know, you can.
We're very proud of him.
Here we are. Mr. Howard Eagle.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
I thank you for the two to three minute monthly opportunity to have input into the business of the board. I really have little to say about a symbolic anti-standardized testing resolution other than the fact that it is purely symbolic, and that I believe is shameful that those who don't have skin in the game would urge those of us who do have skin in the game to accept symbolism over substance. Those of us who understand will not accept symbolism over substance. So what I really wanted to touch with you about is my state of disbelief, my state of amazement that this board, with the exception of Commissioner White, apparently feel that you can totally ignore the fact that one of the members of the board, a commissioner of the board, has in fact participated in bullying behavior. And I want to just express how dangerous that is, the dangerous situation that you put me in as a parent. Now I'm in a situation in which if one of my two children in this system were to lose their minds and engage in bullying, I mean, they've been taught better, and I feel confident that there's a 99.9% chance that they would never engage in such behavior. But as parents, we have to be careful about saying what our children will or won't do. There's always that very small chance that they may lose their minds and engage in some kind of bullying behavior. But the position that you now put me in as a parent is, if they do lose their minds and do that, you can't discipline them. Not you nor any other official in this district will be able to discipline mine if you can't at least insist on an apology from a board member who did the very same thing to violate a policy that you formulated. And I wanted to let you know that I would urge other parents not to allow you or other officials to discipline their children under that policy. Because if that policy is good for our children, certainly it has to be good for the adults who are supposed to be at the top of this system. So I'm here to urge you to act and to not engage in what I believe is a classic strategy on the part of this board to just sort of wait people out and hope that they will go away. We won't go away. This is a very serious issue, and again, I urge you to act.
Thank you, Mr. Eagle. Dan Dermitsich. Mr. Dermitsich will be followed by Karen Eglisea.
Commissioner Evans, I was wondering if I could yield to Dr. David Hirsch, who's number eight, because he has to teach a class at the U of R at 7:05?
Yeah, that's important, because you know, as a former student at U of R, if the professor's not there, within five minutes, we leave, so.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dr. Hirsch. And then after Dr. Hirsch, we'll go back up to Dan.
Thank you. David Hirsch, Warner School of Education, University of Rochester, I'm here to support the resolution on high-stakes testing. This week, I know, most of you know that there's been a special attention paid on WXXI to issues of dropouts in schools, and I had the opportunity on Monday to be part of a taping of a show called "The Middle School Moment," in which I watched a video, a very short video, about a middle school student, an eighth-grade student, who was in danger of flunking out of school. And she lives in the Bronx, or lived in the Bronx. She was taking a subway and a bus to school, seemed that there was no adults in her life, she was shuffling from place to place to live, and the school intervened and worked with her to understand what she was confronting in terms of issues at school, helping her develop her education, they worked to make sure that she was getting to school, and then they worked with her in terms of advising her about applying to high school. And she then got into a high school, a private high school, that gave her a full scholarship. And the importance of this little clip about this eighth-grade student is what the school was doing was giving her the social-cultural capital to succeed in school. They were working with her, the teachers and counselors were spending time outside of class in a group of five or six to talk with her about the issues that she was dealing with, and helping her think about how to confront those issues and how to succeed. And they acted as what was called her institutional agent, somebody that she could trust in school, who she could go to and learn from, and helped her to succeed. What I want to suggest is that, in fact, those are the kinds of things we need for our students to succeed in schools, not just urban schools, but any school, and those get undermined by the emphasis on high-stakes testing, because then we're spending our time preparing students for tests, we're spending our time grading the exams, examining the exams, trying to figure out what that means in terms of instruction, rather than getting to know the students as real people with real challenges and working with them to figure out how to help them get through that. Now, there are some things, I think, in the city school district that are already working in this direction. One I would suggest that we look at, that you look at, is already in its second year is Rochester International Academy, it's working with English language learners, the Warner School is working with them on a study on how to support English language learners to succeed. They have 120 students, grades four through 12, and what they are now in their second year, and what I understand is most of the students at the high school level, they come in with no, very poor or non-existent English language skills, but none of their students have dropped out of school. And it's because the parents, I mean, the parents, the teachers, counselors, and others work with them, work with their families, visit their home situation, and get to know them well, and work as institutional agents to support them in terms of their learning. And it seems to be as... I can't tell if that's the theme?
Yeah, that's the new tune.
The other one to look at is, I've been meeting with people at the All-City High School, and they have 1,100 students, and they have adults assigned to them, counselors, social workers, teachers, administrators, and others, so that each of them are mentoring five students over the course of their career in their school. That's the kind of work we need to do, other than standardized tests. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hirsch. Mr. Dermitsich. After Mr. Dermitsich will be Ms. Karen Eglisea.
First of all, congratulations to the board for having the courage to take this issue of standardized testing on. I think you're probably one of the only large urban boards of education in the country that has the courage to do so, and I think it's paramount that you really give this thoughtful consideration. Perhaps the best way to address the issue that I know of is to examine a concept called Campbell's Law, which is a socioeconomic principle, which says that whenever a socioeconomic goal is reduced to a single number, corruption and perversion in attaining that goal is inevitable. And so I think it's important for the board to look at this in terms of whether or not there is corruption and perversion of the educational process in Rochester being caused by standardized testing. One of the things that we can look at is that by having such a powerful influence on what skills and content are taught in our schools by high-stakes standardized testing, does it prevent 21st-century learning skills from being taught in the schools? And clearly it does, because if you look at the Regents' exams, none of the 21st-century learning skills are being tested for, hence they're not taught. And then you look at whether or not our kids are ready for college, whether or not they're ready for citizenship, whether or not they're ready for work. The state, by their own standards, says that only 5% of our graduates are ready for those types of challenges. So it would seem to be your duty, your obligation, to pass this resolution and challenge it in terms of what it's produced in terms of city graduates. We can go for all the graduates we want, but if they don't have the kind of skills that they need, we're really not accomplishing that much. So it definitely corrupts the process. What we end up with is an illusion that kids have learned the necessary skills for being successful, but they really aren't. High-stakes testing also prevents teachers from altering the curriculum to meet the needs of kids and the needs of society, and to help them become good citizens. The best example that I can think of, the unfortunate example of 9/11 approximately 10, 11 years ago, I can remember when it happened, the next day, every kid in school was so concerned about this, they wanted to learn about it, they wanted to learn why there was so much hatred. What were the economic, governmental, the political principles that were preventing the US from dealing effectively with this, and what would cause people to crash a plane into the World Trade Center at that time? So, we couldn't though, because I talked with just about every social studies teacher in the city, and I said, "How much time are you gonna spend on this?" Probably a month or two, because there's so much enrichment here that you can weave into it in terms of reading, writing, math skills, 21st-century learning skills. All of them said, "I'll spend maybe a day on it, because then I have to get back to covering the curriculum so I can get these kids through the Regents' exams." So you can see more perversion, more corruption in terms of the learning process that would really benefit the kids. I hear the bell, so I'm gonna summarize this by saying, there's probably a couple other things that I wanted to mention as well. One of them is that good teachers who come into this system, young teachers out of college, are leaving our system, despite the fact that they're good, they're creative, they want to work with us, but because of the pressure of high-stakes testing, because of the fact that they're gonna be evaluated on high-stakes testing, they're leaving. So there's a lot of reasons to look at. I've only mentioned a couple, but I hope you consider these in terms of passing a resolution that could be used to call the question with the Board of Regents, the Commissioner, and the Federal Secretary of Education, Arne Duncan, in terms of, "What is going on? Why are you doing this if there's so many bad things happening through high-stakes standardized testing?" Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Eglisea, after Ms. Eglisea will be Ms. Lori Thomas.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, School Boards, Superintendent Vargas, and people in the audience. My name is Karen Eglisea, I'm CEO of Eglisea Educational Centers. I'm here to talk about the changes that's going into effect in after-school tutoring program. These changes seem to have been triggered by the Democrat and Chronicle article that suggested that in the last 10 years, this district has wasted $25 million on tutoring services. The article painted all tutoring providers with one broad stroke. So Dr. Vargas, without the benefit of the data, or the input of providers, or parents such as Ms. Fraser, has deemed tutoring ineffective. Eglisea and SES has helped thousands of kids pass tests, pass courses, keep kids out of summer school, improve SATs, improve on state tests, help remove number-six school off the list before they're forced to close down. SES students have also gotten kids into college and helped students secure academic and athletic scholarships. Dr. Vargas, during these same 10 years, you served as a school board member, you served as the president of the school board, you've served as an interim superintendent, and as a superintendent, and yet we are still below 50%. A district where only 5% of our students are college-ready. A district where 7%, newspaper article on Saturday, we are seventh in the nation in poverty. A district where we are last in the nation of graduating black and Hispanic males. A district with the lowest test scores of the top five, and you guys called me ineffective. In changing the way tutoring is to be conducted this year, you've stripped me of some of the things that has made Eglisea unique to help the Aaron Frazers get into Harvard. Eglisea actively chose to tutor Level 1 kids, more than any other provider. 72% of the students that we picked were Level 1 or 2. We are penalized because we choose the lowest-performing students, special-needs kids, and ESOL kids. These are the largest population that's harder to move. You've taken away the ability for us to tutor students in their own neighborhoods. You told me, Karen, we've wasted $25 million. How could you say that's a waste? It's an investment. You're saying that we cannot tutor in our centers, that it has to be done in our schools. This shuts out and leaves behind students that participate in after-school programs. This shuts out students who have to get their younger siblings off of school buses. They rely on those particular days and also on weekends. You told us we cannot transport kids in a district where 80-something percent of our kids are poor. You've taken away transportation. Have you seen our math vans? How bad are those? I hear the bell, I'm gonna wrap up. Can you imagine having a 12-year-old daughter walking after tutoring? My tutoring services are effective. Had you bothered to talk to the parents or even visited, you are the only superintendent in 18 years that have not visited an Eglisea center. But Dr. Vargas, I do consider you a friend. You've called... You've called me on several occasions while you were a counselor at Grease High School and asked me to help the kids in Grease. I was good enough for the kids in Grease. I think I'm just as good for the Rochester City School District students. Thank you.
And after Ms. Thomas will be Jack Lingerack.
I came to ask that the Board adopt Resolution 299 as the first step in stopping the standardized testing madness in our district. I was recently forwarded an article about testing kindergarteners for their readiness. The article states, "Oregonian Gilbert Park Elementary Teacher Jessica Evers guides Kindergarten Delia Ortiz-Ponce through a timed exercise testing on letters and letter sounds. By the end of the year, experts, excuse me, Evers expects her students to read simple storybooks on their own and to write a short research paper in kindergarten. Will this process, will this process take into account that some children are naturally shy and will not speak to strangers? What about children who are taught not to talk to strangers? All these children are going to be referred for special services? Commissioner Evans, Commissioner Campos, is that the way you want your children to be treated and subsequently educated? Yes, we must know how our children are from every perspective. However, time would be better spent questioning the parent about the child while observing the child in various interactive settings to define their strengths. We are humans, our children are humans, to be loved, not quantified by data bits and dollar signs. Let's be the district, that the city, let's be the district, the city, that began the process to stop the standardized testing madness. We've hit rock bottom, the worst in the nation. We've got nothing to lose. It's time to begin the climb to this top, and by adopting this resolution, this can be our first step. And I have something here for you to... And, just a moment. My time's not up yet. I'm taking all of my time. Ah, the best laid plans with mice and men.
Happy Easter to you too.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. One of my favorite songs. Mr. Lingerack followed by Gerard Iglesia.
In addition to being a consultant in the field of arts and education, I teach at Nazareth College, and I'm a member of the Coalition for Justice in Education. I commend Commissioner Adams for introducing the anti-testing resolution before you this evening, and appreciate your willingness to take a clear, hard look at the powerful points it makes along the way. There are many well-documented harmful outcomes of the high-stakes testing regime now in place. These include, of course, teaching to the test, the narrowed curricular opportunities, emotional distress among the children, an increase in the number of dropouts, cases of corruption in the test-taking process, score inflation, inaccurate reporting of results, some of the things that Mr. Dermisich referred to a little bit ago. The tests themselves have been shown to be inferior, too often containing questionable items, and, as we have seen recently, even ridiculous items that make no sense. Testing has worked to reduce the love of learning we are all born with. It has marginalized very high-performing students and students with special needs. The one-size-fits-all approach models a disregard for individual differences, for critical thinking skills, and human creativity. The increasingly higher pressures placed on testing undermine a positive school climate so necessary for encouraging student success. The resolution before you encourages a move away from a heavily scripted, lockstep curriculum, creating an opportunity to finally and fully embrace Howard Gardner's theory of multiple intelligences, to recognize that students need to be given opportunities to learn through a variety of approaches that can be measured in multiple ways. Schools need to be cooler than the streets, so let's widen the curriculum for all of our students, and instead of a high-stakes testing initiative, let's engage all of our students in and through the arts. The multiple sources of data supporting the impact of arts-based learning are rich with statistical proof that it improves literacy and math, that diverse learners make significant gains, that it enhances the learning environment, and that student motivation for learning increases. When a student is playing in a band or orchestra, participating in art-making in support of curriculum, or performing in a play, integrating curricular content, in addition to learning the arts-based skills involved in those activities, that student is also learning about discipline, responsibility, collaboration, communication, problem-solving, learning from mistakes, listening, creativity, and critical thinking. A pretty good set of 21st century skills for a kid to have in his or her pocket. And to learn those skills and have fun in school at the same time, cooler than the streets. Thank you. I urge you to pass this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Lingerack. Gerard Iglesia. Mr. Iglesia will be followed by Gerald Coles.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Iglesia, and I need to know, why was the contract rescinded for Iglesia Educational Centers to provide SAT prep classes to the students of Early College? I speak as a husband, a teacher, and as someone who has devoted 30 years trying to help the youth in our area. Every day, I see many youth making poor choices that have repercussions for their future, but they have some excuses. They're young, there's peer pressure, poor role models, and bad parenting, just to name a few. But I'm absolutely dumbfounded when educated leaders of our district make poor choices. They have no excuses. They're armed with data, testimonials, and recommendations, and yet they still make bad, politically motivated decisions that undermine our students' chance for success. It's ridiculous that I have to stay, stand here tonight and make a case for Iglesia. They have a long history of providing SAT prep to thousands of kids. Our prep classes have helped many kids secure millions of dollars in athletic and academic scholarships to some of the top colleges in our country. These colleges include Syracuse, Notre Dame, Harvard, Columbia, U of R, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Our alumni include basketball, Syracuse basketball star Brandon Trish, Erica Bryant of the Democrat and Chronicle, Harvard graduate Aaron Frazier, and former Edison basketball star Bettina Love. Now, let me tell you about Bettina Love. She struggled to read books in high school. Now she's writing books as Dr. Bettina Love, Ph.D. We have prepared the children of past superintendents, as well as the children of principals, administrators, and teachers. We've, actually, some of our old students are now teachers and administrators in the district. We've prepped Mayor Duffy's kids, State Regent Wade Norwood's kid. When Dr. Vargas was a council for Grease School District, he sent many kids to be prepped by Iglesia. So now that he's superintendent, why is he rescinding the contract for Iglesia to provide the same service to city kids that he recommended for so many of his Grease kids? Last year, Iglesia partnered with Early College for SAT prep. The results were fantastic, and the kids and the principal loved it. The principal, who we are told is a building CEO, and the principal loved it so much, she drew up a contract for the program to go on again this year. An agreement was reached, and now suddenly, without any real good reason, Dr. Vargas has rescinded that contract. The data showed remarkable improvement, yet the district now wants to explore other options. Dr. Vargas, as a former guidance counselor, you understand more than anyone in this room the importance of SATs in the college admissions process. It's unbelievable that you would take away the successful program. This just smells bad. This reminds me about six years ago when we ran an SAT camp over the April break. For two straight years, 150 kids came during their break to get to improve their SATs so they could get into the school of their dreams. Two people stand, and their scores went up an average of 110 points. Two stories stick out. Aaron Frazier, as a result, helped get him to Harvard. Keon Mitchum, star basketball of East High School, wound up going, getting a full basketball scholarship to TCU. There's a bunch of other stories like that. But what happened to this program? The district eliminated it due to some pressure. It was told to us that that program should be run by teachers, okay? We understand politics, all right? But even though we thought of the idea, we organized it, we implemented it, and it was a huge success, it had to go to teachers. Fine, let the teachers do it, but guess what? They never picked up on it. Never. And as a result, at this point, 1,000 more people could have raised their scores and fulfilled their dreams too. Look, I understand politics and paybacks. It's part of the game. But when you use kids as pawns in this game, when you deny them access to programs and resources that will have a positive impact on their lives, then that's not just unethical, it's not just immoral, it's borderline child abuse. So I say to you, the distinguished members of this school board, I implore you to give our kids the same opportunities as Dr. Vargas students had in Grease. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerald Coles, after Mr. Coles, Mark Friedman, is he here?
Good evening, Gerald Coles. I'm here to speak in support of the testing resolution. I feel qualified to speak about this because I've been not only a faculty member of Rutgers Medical School and Warner School, but I've written several books and numerous professional articles on the educational research that has been used to support various educational This evening, I'd like to address a few major conclusions about high-test standardized testing that's been drawn from major research institutes such as the National Research Council, of the National Academy of Science, the Rand Corporation, as well as from the research of major educational researchers such as Linda Darling-Hammond and Richard Rothstein. The first major conclusion about, research-based conclusion about these tests is they simply are not an accurate reflection of what students learn. The National Research Council reviewed all of the research on this and concluded that you have a subset of test items that purportedly reflect what students know about a subject, but that assumption is wholly false. It is wholly false. At the extremes, there are students who do well on tests, who know little about a subject, and conversely, students who do poorly, who know very well. So that in itself should be enough to eliminate standardized testing, because the assumption that it's measuring what it's supposed to is not correct. Secondly, the increase of standardized testing has been very damaging to the students nationwide. As one person has already mentioned, the research again shows that there's an inverse correlation between the increase in standardized testing and dropout rate. The larger the amount of standardized testing, the larger, the greater the attrition of students. Thirdly, in terms of what this standardized testing is supposed to do for the nation, then the research is very clear over the last 12 years that it has done nothing to improve the academic achievement of the United States relative to the academic achievement of other nations with high achievement outcomes. And so consequently, with the increase of greater standardized testing under Common Core Standards and so forth, we can only expect that that relationship is going to continue, that is, the gap between the United States achievement and achievement of other high, of other nations with high achievement scores. And finally, I just wanted, I wanted to address a point that nobody had addressed, and that is, in terms of the value-added formulas for assessing teachers, again, the research shows that the standardized tests are wholly useless in measuring the effectiveness of this. To give one quick example, there was a major study that was done that found of the teachers who were in the top 20% of categorized effective teachers one year, only 1/3 of those teachers were in that same category the following year, and 40% of those teachers who were in the top category were in the bottom category, bottom 1/3, the following year. So in terms of teacher effectiveness, it's wholly useless. So for those and other reasons, research-based reasons, I urge you to support the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Coles, thank you. Mark Friedman, Mark Friedman will be followed by Bonnie Canadian.
Good evening. My name's Mark Friedman. I'm a city school district teacher. I'm a member of the Community Education Task Force. I have three major points to speak to tonight. The first point, detailed within the letter of support that we put throughout the community, is calling for Commissioner Adams to issue a public apology for having engaged last month within public bullying behavior, which I will hand to you guys after I speak. The second point, the original issue that we raised last month, in which we were talking about the future conditions of our schools, what schools will open, what will close, what programs will be there, and the need to have the district, and especially the Board, communicate what is their vision for the future of the district. That still has not been called, except for Van White, who responded to our call to have a meeting and was gracious enough to have a conversation, at least entertain the conversation, with us, which left, again, the concerns within the community that the Board does not really have a vision in terms of what the future direction of the district is going in. Whatever the administration pushes, if it sounds good enough, let's go with it. If it's politically feasible, let's do it. And third, for some of my former speakers that were coming up, I don't want to come up here and, you know, blast a negative message per se, but I want to offer us caution in terms of the standardized testing resolution, just in the sense that it's got to have, for me to be enthusiastic and for others in the community to be enthusiastic, it's got to have an action, an enforcement mechanism. An example, a concrete example of that would be really setting in place, putting in place, when we're talking about building together kind of forces that are going to place pressure on Albany, because this is a very state-centered issue, right? Other elected officials, parents, community members, teachers, unions, labor, et cetera, to place that pressure on Albany. Because without having those action sets put in place, it can largely end up being symbolic. What are we going to be left with? We're going to have a resolution, but we don't know what's going to happen afterwards. It's going to be the same standardized testing juggernaut that we are very much so against within the Community Education Task Force and very critical of, but we've got to talk about how are we going to concretely move against that and really build a strategy. Otherwise, I'm not sure exactly what the end result of this is going to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie Canadian. Bonnie Canadian will be followed by Tim Adams.
Good evening. My name is Bonnie Canadian.
Give him to the clerk, give him to the clerk, give him to the clerk. Because I want to listen to her, so. Yeah. Thank you.
I'll try again.
Hello, good night, I mean, not good night, good evening. My name is Bonnie Canaan. I'm a member of the Community Education Task Force, longtime resident of Rochester. First, one thing I'd like to ask, when are they going to get new lighting here? Some of us have difficulty with, you know, looking at things and the light here is not good. So I understand you're working on that, so keep going. What was done by the four people on the evening of September 26th who met at the Flying Squirrel Community Center to discuss racism and how to address it? Yes, the four are also members of the CETF, but it was not a CETF meeting. The meeting was disrupted by several people, including Commissioner Adams. Commissioner Adams said nothing while the other intruders who accompanied her shouted and swore at the four. The answer to the initial question posed in this response is, nothing at all was done by the four CETF members to provoke such an aggressive verbal assault. There can be little doubt that such behavior is not in keeping with any code of ethics geared toward appropriate behavior of students or any elected official. The request for an apology is very reasonable. Perhaps the most important point is to keep in mind what was contributed to this, what contributed to this outcome rests largely in the fact that serious requests made by CETF for public dialogue with Commissioner Adams pertaining to concerns related to the future of the City School District were refused with no explanation. She refused to meet in spite of the fact she is an elected official with a commitment to do so. The silence of not only Commissioner Adams related to vital communication requested, but also the same request that was made of the board and with the exception of one board member, was also greeted with silence. Such a lack of response to legitimate requests can, as seen by the situation that occurred on September 26th, result in continuing tension rather than the responsibility of greater awareness. This petition could be seen by the board as an opportunity to restart that awareness. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Adams.
Good evening, my name's Tim Adams. I'd like to support the points raised by Mr. Eagle, Mr. Friedman, and Ms. Canaan, and also support a lot of the things that were said by members of CJE regarding standardized testing, the need to reform it, and the research-based data that shows that need. However, my position on this resolution specifically is it does not go far enough. I'd like to encourage those in the room who are activists and who are active in this area of education reform to continue pushing in this area if we're going to actually be effective in making that change. As far as what I'd like to speak to tonight, I'd like to give, I'd like to revisit some history. As an activist, I know many in the room consider themselves activists. We want to make a change in the world, we want to make things better. Of course, we have to look at history to see how that's done. Now, I remember being engaged in serious struggle around educational issues such as marital control, which we defeated, and such as the superintendent selection process. And in that work, I remember specifically being engaged with Commissioner Adams, then not Commissioner yet, Mary Adams, who was one of the strongest activists I had ever seen. And the tactics that we engaged in, we were in a war at that point. Right up through the selection of Superintendent Vargas, we were engaging in war, and we were successful, and our tactics were... I guess my question is, were we bullying then? Have our tactics changed? Have the words that we've used through emails and on Facebook gotten any more extreme than they have been with, for example, Commissioner Van White, or Commissioner Willa Powell, or any other commissioner on this board? And back then, were we bullying? When Commissioner Adams and many others who are now turning their back on us and calling us bullies, were we bullying then? Were you all bullying then? Or has your position changed on what's acceptable now that you've gotten a seat on the board? So I'd like to, I guess, keep that question open, and hopefully someone will respond. I wanted to send you an email, Commissioner Adams, but I know you're not going to respond, and so I guess I'll say it on the record here. So what is bullying? We've been called bullies, and yet four days later, our meeting is interrupted with Commissioner Adams present. She did nothing to stop that, and yet we're the bullies. So I guess I'd like to ask the question, what does it mean to redefine what bullying is and when it is or is not acceptable? And you just get to say stay silent because, well, that's the position you're in. So I guess that's about all I've got to say. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. We will now move to the superintendent's report. Actually, we have two last speakers that I'm going to call up. They're not on agenda item, but I don't want to keep them waiting. It's Amy Metcalf here, talk about fire safety. And after Amy, is Quavis here, Quavis Walker? So we'll have Amy Metcalf, and then we'll conclude with Quavis Walker.
My name is Amy Metcalf. I'm the wife of a Rochester City firefighter and the producer of Watch Out Wilson. Watch Out Wilson is a 30-minute fire safety and fire prevention DVD that can be viewed either as a TV show or in small clips in a classroom as part of a fire safety curriculum. Watch Out Wilson took two years to complete, from raising money through private investors to writing a screenplay in conjunction with the Rochester City Fire Department, and finally, meeting with the community, I think it's the Community Outreach Department at the Rochester City School District to help us edit it and work on curriculum. So why did we, why did we do this DVD? Some statistics are this. Children under five years of age are at the greatest risk from home fire death and injury with a death rate nearly twice the national average. African-American children are more than three times as likely as white children to die in a fire. And children from low-income families are five times more likely to die in a fire. So we're asking the Rochester City School District to test this curriculum, which was written... We got some consulting from Catherine Yarlet, who approved the curriculum that we wrote with her, and we're asking you to test it in your pre-K and K classrooms. And our goal is to have it become part of your fire safety and health programming in the school district. And that's it. I have all of the curriculum here, and I have a DVD, which is a sample of the video that they were showing us.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Metcalf. Quavis Walker?
Hello, everybody, how y'all doing? My name is Quavis Walker. Basically, I just had a concern, a huge concern for me, I don't know about for everybody else. Well, I've been working for the district, well, I've worked for the district for eight years, from 2004 to 2012. And one thing that kind of always gets to me every year, every year, is the accountability of paraprofessionals. Now, some of y'all don't know what paraprofessionals is. They're just, they're the teachers aides, work with the teachers, help keep a lot of the kids calmed down. And I know at schools like 28 and 29, they have kids that need special needs. Some kids that's in a wheelchair, some kids that you need to take to the bathroom. And I watched paraprofessionals treat them as if they were nothing. I saw them treat some of the, you know, kids that got ADD as if they were nothing. And some of these kids should be at a Christian Heritage Home. Now, if the state was to walk in and see a heritage employee treat a resident like the way the teachers aides treat these kids, they'd lose their job. I know there's some paraprofessionals that come in high out their mind, or even drunk from the night before, and that, and because of that, they started to make bad judgment calls on letting kids fight, coming in late, saying, sort of pulling out their cell phones, mouthing off at the teachers, and all of that. So basically, can't y'all do like a surprise drug test or something like that? I mean, I always said if I own an apartment building in the city, I'll always do a surprise drug test, and if any of them was on drugs, they'd get evicted. And one other thing, I had got laid off in June 2011. Now, I was cool with it, I wasn't upset. I was like, it is what it is, whatever. You know, I had just graduated, I got my degree in criminal justice, but I wanted to go on and teach. But then I was part of that parent-to-teacher program, then I got laid off, and I wasn't going to pay the St. John Fisher amount to go to school. Saying that to say is that there's some parents that are inside the city school district with the heart to teach, with the heart to see things change, but then they get laid off for a parent that was there for 10 years, who really don't care about it, just there to collect the paycheck and to look at people, and to look at students. Y'all know what I mean. So just a higher accountability when it comes to that. And one last thing about the folks not graduating. I've got a youth group at my church. I've got a youth group at my church, and I have some real bad kids in there. And so far this year, they not doing bad, they the best behaved kids in the classroom. I had them Tuesday through Saturday throughout the summer, and I got them Tuesdays and teach them, I teach them computers, and I teach them on Saturdays when we have our youth group. I teach them to clean up, I teach them to clean up. I like to meet with y'all, just show me these bad kids, let me look at them face to face. And I guarantee with the help that I have, any type of sentence I could be with you guys, so, you know, to help, benefit. Thumbs up to Iglesia too. Holler, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. We'll now move to the superintendent's report. Mr. Superintendent, you have a report for us?
Yes, I do. Mr. President, I would ask the board to join me for a powerpoint presentation, please.
Board, if you can join us in the front row for the superintendent's presentation.
Well, you have permitted talk to you about opportunity for our students. Someone said that I've been around for a long time, and I have. One thing that haven't changed since I've been here is the amount of time that we give our students for learning opportunity. Perhaps it's the most serious matter before the group and before this community. Our children in Rochester City School District receive less instructional time than any of the group of children in Monroe County. Common sense would tell us that we must address this issue, and we're going to change the trajectory of this issue. So we... More time won't do. But however, if we don't give our children more time that involve high-quality learning, we will not get to where we need to be, our first student achievement. The research is very clear. The learning gap among minority children and urban children is mostly due to how they spend their time at school, at home, and in the community. It is not much that the broader education can do in how the children spend time at home, or in the community. However, we have a leadership responsibility to advocate for children everywhere. So we have a vision here, and that is that if we give our children more time and support, high-quality time and support, that we will be able to prepare them to face the challenge in a complex society and to compete, and to close the achievement gap, and to improve the graduation rate, and to improve reading, and to improve socialization, the emotional well-being. So it's more than just academic. So this would be a leadership, a gigantic mistake, and it requires some serious focus and battle of war. And in my part, and in the part of the entire district, I am very happy to tell you that all unions are very supportive of this initiative. But the Bensky, actually, the cement men can help them, the district, has given Brentwood a more foundation. And we believe that if we give it the time and the opportunity for learning for our children, that they will achieve their potential. So there's a framework here, and the framework, I won't go through it, but I want to have you pay attention to the fact of what I, which I first opened up my remark, by saying that if you have a child that comes and sends 400 words vocabulary to our school versus a child that's saying, in a middle-class family, they suffer. It seems to me that if we give them the sentimental time in school, it would be a little bit more challenging without our child or that child in the Rochester City School District catch up with child practice. Just common sense. And particularly, if you take into account what's taking place at home and in the community. And I don't want to go there and spend all night talking about the difference. So the school, I believe, will be able to mitigate some of the challenges that our children experience in their neighborhood and home. And we have been talking about the impact of poverty on children, it's well documented, it's well known. I believe that we can mitigate a lot of the challenges that they are facing by giving them a well-rounded support, socio-emotional, physical support, and yet, you have to have a very rich, challenging, uniform curriculum throughout this district. As I mentioned to you, I'm one of them alone. Going to have to have a very high-quality curriculum. Some of you have talked about understanding of, about the concern, about the black and Latino man. If I tell you that I have so many stories that would make you cry, that is, I met a boy at a homicide school, that one came to last on eighth. In October last year, I asked that young man, what would you like to be when you grow up? He said to me, I want to be a doctor, a physician. And I said, are class A and A? So he began describing his Porsche to me. He said, well, what do you like about the school? I said, well, I don't like it that much. And he said, so I said, how come? I said, well, I was a pen school in eighth. And there, I was able to take AP classes. And I take full responsibility, I came here feeling a significant challenge. That school didn't have a single AP class that I knew, which is one of the reasons I recommended this board, that we needed to eschad it closely for the social face our basing school. I asked him, and I reviewed his rec, that boy was not getting the time, the opportunity, the curriculum that he needed with this. And I take responsibility, actually, I won't tell you personally how much I spent for him to mitigate the learning loss. But I can tell you that he came about three or four weeks later with his mentor, who happened to be a doctor, and we helped him move to another school this year, and he's taking AP classes. But this shouldn't be just for some kid. It has to be for all our children that are not known. You will see that in my next meeting, Anita Murphy. And we talked to you a little bit about the curriculum and the work that we need to do in this district around providing opportunity to our kids. But unless we take into account the time and wonder, let me repeat, unless you take account of time... Let me repeat, unless you take account of time, quality time to account for our students and for teachers. Because one thing that they told me, all the teachers in this district is that our children need more support. Unquestioned, hundred percent almost think that. Next, please. So, to improve the student achievement, we, as I mentioned, we have to give them rigorous academic, uh, deep study. Learning is a functional time and effort. Actually, I do know President Evans, because he brings aroma. But one thing that, as I observed him growing up and same thing that they play on his adult life, the U O R, he used to go to library. He should be like him. None of you was smart. People turned aside. He had a lot of support. Not just from, from the school. Actually, I, I still know teachers that talk about you, President Evans. But I know people in the community. I know people at home that, um, spoke about you achieving your potential. But one thing that you and I agree is that time not happen. But time alone won't do. You need the support as well. High quality instruction, high quality support for teaching, high quality support for school principal and everybody around the child. Um, the instruction that would be taught with the needs of the school. Next, please. Relevant programs. That means that you will see, no old school have to look alike, but they have to be essential component like the curriculum and the opportunity have to be available for them. Elective courses, yes. Um, physical education, film, the, um, I mean, um, sport, arts, music. I have said to you and I will repeat it to you again. You will never see this superintendent's unit about three. That thought art, music, or sport or extracurricular activity. And the reason is that that's how you engage out there. That's how you build relationship. That's how you make the school more exciting than the street. And we can do it. You might say, how you gonna do it? Where you gonna find your money? It's about priority and we can do it. Uh, you saw the cultural relevance in there. Again, each one of this point, I could speak problem all night. Uh, we're passionate about the meaning that it has that each one of this point we have in our students. Build relationship. Teaching is about relationship as much as it is about the program. Everybody, the good teacher always will tell you that. That they search for what it would take to bring their kid to motivate that kid, to support that kid, to engage that kid. But a teacher cannot do it alone. We have to send a message to our community, at the school and everywhere that, well, the teacher and the school principal and the school, and this, we have a responsibility to build a strong relationship. But so do the, the students and the family and everybody else. So it's two-way street. Family needs extremely important. And again, because our family are facing somewhat challenging, it's much easier if we give them flexible time in which they can visit our school. So that no longer you, the school is available to family only between the school hours. Wellness, Commission of Kansas, the Senator Lea, participated in a program that was wonderful. At school number ninety, through the Greater Rochester Health Foundation, gave that school one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars for our children to play sport in the afternoon and engage in physical activity. That's what I mean when I said to this community that Rochester City School District can not do this work alone. We need the community's support. We don't have the budget, we don't have the resources, we don't have the expertise. And most significant, common sense tell you that our children need us and we need to be available to them at the school, not just during the school hours. And when you have, um, um, in my class, the conversation of this community, I had a man who happened to be a nurse, who sent her child to one of our school. And she said, I wish that my kid could stay at school home, engage in extracurricular activity and sport. Because I worked as a nurse aide in one of the, a lot of hospital. And she is not there when the child arrive. And she doesn't have the sufficient financial need in which you can pay for daycare. So, it would be nice if we would get a partner, community agents, who had the same goals in Rochester City School District and the teacher will have. And that is, uh, how could we help out the, the fellow as well-rounded children in the area, not just so academic, but social and emotional and physical development. Um, we also believe that this would give more time to our teaching and administrator for shared professional learning. Uh, we also, uh, required to provide the bench. We also, um, believe that we can do this if we expand the school day, that would be much easier to provide expanded support than if you limit out of your time. In Massachusetts, for example, with this big tribe, that is, um, the major effort on the way, they call it the twenty twenty plan. This is well researched, it's very promising. And, uh, Massachusetts right now, if it were to be, um, a country, would be the third in the world in terms of student achievement. And one of the top achievements in the nation for minority and older students as well. Better than New York. Next, please. So there's urgency here now, because you know, the Rochester City School District is a focused district. But that means that I have over fifty-plus school. That's what I've been learning in the next, next, in the past ninety days. Actually, that's what I've been learning in the past year and a half since I've been here. Where I want to put a plan and we have submitted a close goal to the board. We now need to put metric in there where this is a search of urgency that we have. And those metrics, you probably see that we want at least twenty percent of our students to be receiving extended learning. And, uh, we've been working with you in collaboration to do that. Once again, we're not talking about expanding the school day where children can just sit down and hear the teacher. This is not what this is all about. This is to provide our children with socio-emotional support that the teacher, the community, and we know their need. We also need to provide them with rigorous curriculum. We also need to make the school as interesting as it should be. That means that our children need to have opportunity for high quality music instruction, arts, they said, extracurricular activity and language. I don't want to tell you, but you had about fourteen school, particularly the face out, that didn't provide the classes that a child would need to go to the U O R or even to go to a regular SUNY school. And that is because no school required three years of energy. That, I know you have to point finger, but if we are going to change this, we want to have to change the trajectory. As people say, are being part of the past. So if a finger could be pointing, it's me. I will say that. However, as Dr. Vanski would say to you, and it is one of the expression that I heard him say about twenty years ago. You know, the definition is, is to continue to do the same thing all over again and expect a different result. Everybody, you hope it out of them days, because that sometimes get me in trouble, because I do a lot of reflection. That means that year to year, we had to reflect in what we do as a teacher, as a superintendent, and as a board. You cannot continue to do what you always have done and expect that you're gonna get the same result. Um, expanded learning time, I mentioned before, foundation have been instrumental in helping us. Um, we have serious challenge and that's so that we had a lot of, we want to move to a situation where our children, we, we are being proactive rather than reactive. That's what I had said when I had challenged the community to help the district with all children to learn, to be a great level of reading by third grade. And, uh, how do that would require tremendous focus and support to our kid. Um, as you can see, target grade level reading, you will not change the trajectory of African-American male, female. Because by the way, in this district, all children need to improve. Now, I can give you the case, it is true that the African-American boys follow by Latino, have the progress result. And that's the educational achievement, but you think it's taken. If you think that that's the only challenge that we have. So, we are going to get to the situation of reading, which I, we are engaging and going to be targeting resources. Because the research is very clear, that if we fail to teach our three hundred we by third grade, they might think that they could go to eighth grade with poor reading skill, it's about seventy-four percent chance. And when they enter ninth grade, with significant skill deficient in the area of reading, it's very difficult and very unlikely that they're gonna make it to high school, which is what we have here. And normally that, even if they make it to high school, that would be about African-American boys and Latino. And urban people would be about fourth grade reading level we call the white country. Never mind the international norm. Now, let me remind us that in the year twenty twenty, about half of our children would be African-American or Latino in this nation. The kindergarten class that is started in twenty eleven, when I wish you could introduce superintendent. That kindergarten class happened, the kindergarten class that I use, I know. So, there is a sense of urgency, not, not just in this community. What Rochester is experienced is not just, it's not just unique to us. I mean, you, it's like debating whether the children in each district, twenty-seven percent are doing better than us in Elon. Because twenty-seven percent of the children of particular district are doing better than us. Say that Rochester, you have to be careful in this comparison. Sometimes we say, Syracuse is doing better than Rochester, but you see that it's only one point different. I mean, it's us, let's say twenty-six and late twenty-seven. So be careful when you read that in the media, because don't be confused. There's no statistical significant difference in those comparisons. But people say that, I heard it or not, Rochester is dead last. It is true. At the same time, that doesn't mean that I can look with, you know, and with comfort and say that every girl has the problem having to solve. This is a national problem, this is state problem, and for the most part, it's an urban problem. Bonding opportunity. So people have been challenging me, how are you gonna pay for this? This is where the board can say, you have to focus your resource and target. And, uh, uh, so, there was a waiver that give us tremendous flexibility in how we use, uh, Taiwan fund. A contract for excellence give us some opportunity. They got the school grant that we are gonna go for. The equity first entry, safety enough to school. Foundation money, the Riquelos Foundation, for example, was giving us six million dollars for summer learning. Uh, we, we are going for grant of the product of, of the district efficiency grant. You might have read the paper that Rochester was one of the few qualified for. Let me take credit for a minute. The reason you qualify was because of the efficiency that I introduced in your budget. And the reason many other districts didn't qualify is because we continue to save money, we are taking into account efficiency. Let me just repeat that. The reason that we qualified was because last year I said, we're in a challenge here and I said, I want to re-direct your budget. And I love music, physical education, and I'm able to demonstrate to this state in New York. But we didn't begin to cry or to argue with each other. But I would say that we were going to work together. We said that we were going to work together. And thank you Dr. Vanski for your collaboration. I thank the administration, uh, union, I thank Anthony, I thank the fire profession, and I thank this community. But we will have time together and that include the school board and me. Short term, as you can see, through the help of the Wex, the Wexman Foundation, uh, we have been able to, their encouragement, some support to expand the learning opportunity at the Northeast College Program. Like the main mission, if they don't declare a picture. That's why at least three years, I'm gonna stick to it and reinforcing the examining, weekly, monthly, yearly, and see where we are. Uh, the only thing I can tell you is that I went there about three weeks ago and of around five thirty. Our children, in Chicago, I said you there, were happening, eating tilapia. Five thirty, um, you know, I come from the island. Fish is something that I have good taste for. But tilapia is not my, not my first one. You know, I said, children eating tilapia. And by the way, it wasn't fried tilapia, it was in camera. Um, a part of the improvement was, that was the only choice. And it was very sad for me to see a group of children who couldn't get there at that time. Um, their own is working on that. It makes sure that we serve certain pool, many pool that our children have some of the choice. That's what I mean by improvement that, that, that wasn't happy to see a group of children without alternative with their family were there as well. And it was, uh, by the way, over three hundred and seventy-five of them were there on Friday. You might see some report in January that everyone for the local news was talking about the child. Who say, we like it being here, we like, we like being here. So, I trust and I confident that our children, that's not the fishing with our children, they are great. They are speaking for any children in this nation and in this world. That if we give them the time and support, they will achieve up to their potential. School number nine. Uh, again, um, an incredible possibility in there. We're trying to build and I thank our principal for, and the staff there, and the teachers, and parent profession, and everybody, and the community that have given this support. And there you have the most vulnerable students, perhaps in one of the most vulnerable population. You know, English language learner. And they are trying their best. We also have a very unique program for African-American boys that is very proud, that we need to build and support. Uh, you might assume that it's definitely for the D N C theater, for Fabio, uh, vignette of the lives who are children, they are the challenging and how resilient they are. Or resilience doesn't just have, you have to build. And in that program, that's what, that's what's taking place in there. All city had, uh, President Evans told me that that's probably found a better looking school that we have today. So, uh, the students are excited, we're making some adjustments to the facility. And we are, um, we are happy to tell you that those five children that were pretty honest last year, the story that I told you about children who have an AP in that building, they had that opportunity that they didn't have last year. So, as I mentioned to you, that's one of the goal for next year, it's gonna be a lot of hard work. And counting on your support, I believe that we can do it and we will do it. Um, now, if you don't mind, follow me and I will fulfill my career work in that. Thank you. Twenty more minutes?
No.
Have a lot of important things to talk about. Have a lot of important things to talk about. Okay. As I mentioned to you. As I mentioned to you, we are a focused district. What that means is that we have an obligation to the state of New York, for about over 50 schools, we had to submit a plan to the state of New York. I don't have a choice, you don't have a choice, it is the law, and we had to follow. We right now, as a district, I engage in very rigorous work, getting each one of our school to get ready to submit a plan to the state. We are getting tremendous support from the state of New York to assist us in this work. I want to thank the staff at the school level, and also the central office level for the dedication and work, and how they're responding. People I feel are positive, I believe that they are ready to face the challenge that we have. And my hope is that in a very new future, we can change our status from being a district that is experiencing academic challenge to a district that can be seen as a promising, and one in which we begin to turn the corners around, around student achievement. In order to do that, you heard me, the attendance is the key. That's why we have submit to the board, the evidence in terms of the new approach for our truancy initiative, which is at a very early age. Our challenge is not just at the high school level. The issue of attendance and truancy is visible at the high school level. Normally, you don't see a five years old on the street, or first grade, or second or third. Therefore, we might think that our children at that age are attending school on a regular basis, quite to the contrary. We have serious challenge at the kindergarten, first grade, second and third, and this year, this is part of our priority, and it's one of our priority because, as we have learned in the past 90 day, and before, it's an area that need our attention. If we are going to improve in student achievement by being proactive, there's no more important goal in this district than to get our children to read by third grade. And we cannot do it when we have thousands of children that don't come to school regularly, and particularly when many of those children are at the elementary level. So I looking to submit to you some progress report. The problem is that we don't even have a baseline data, because the prior years, for many years, our attendance, which I, we told the state of New York, have been unreliable at best. So we, I want to submit to you that in the area of attendance, I want to thank Anita, her team, and Beverly. We believe that we are turning the corner. My dashboard, I open daily, and it appeared to be working. However, the, the data shows some troubling number already. We have close to 1,000 kids that haven't showed up to school yet, and we also beginning to see the same pattern that we have seen in the past. This is where we're going to need the community. When a first grader is not coming to school, it's not just a school issue, that's a family, community issue, and we need to work together to help the family, to do whatever it takes to get our children to school. I want to thank the city and the United Way for being open and offering help, they've been very supportive, and, and we need their support if we are going to be successful. The APPR, the annual performance teacher evaluation principle, as you know, we are engaged in that work, it's a, it's a tremendous amount of work that is going on, and thank you to Bethany, the bargaining union, and everybody else. I think that we are making progress, at least in beginning to implement what it is probably the most challenging evaluation system in the history of the state of New York. Our budget, you will see, and you had received some financial data, we have a $33 million gap for next year. As I offered to you last year, by November, I will come to you with some way in which we are going to approach this challenge of closing the 33 million gap for the year 2013, We will work with the commissioner power, who shared our committee as we done in the past, as we begin to educate our community and ourselves around the financial challenge that we are facing. However, as I told you, President Evans, we, we like to talk about what we have, what we don't have, and we would like to talk about how we solve problem, rather than to talk about the problem. So, we are going to engage the public through the board on, and how to help us deal with this challenge. We believe that the community has a role as well. We are looking forward to the board cabinet retreat, in which we can outline some of this issue, we can continue to revisit our priority, and our goals and objectives, and one who believe that an organization like this has to have the fewest, the goal, the better it is, because you can't have, when you're in a situation like this, you cannot have 20, 30, 40, and any given day, an organization of this size sometimes is preoccupied with 40 or 50 things. We, as a board, have to be focused, have to be careful that we don't detract ourselves from the interests of our children. Our children are counting on us, and our community are counting on us, and I could tell you that we will deliver for them if we stay focused. That conclude my report, President Evans.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent on his report? Commissioner Elliott?
Thank you, President Evans. Couple of things, with regard to the long-term vision, your report said, Superintendent Vargas, that you were looking at a goal of 20%, beginning in 2013, 14. My question would be, why not have that number to be higher than that, particularly since, you know, we have a low graduation rate, and particularly because of the, you know, the state numbers in terms of those who are actually ready for, for college and for postgraduate education? Why wouldn't that number be greater than 20%?
That's an excellent question, and let me give you my honest answer. I do believe that Rochester have experienced so many reform, and part of that problem have been that at times, the organization has not been ready. Let me give you, for example, the, our attendance. Right now, pretty much including your graduation rate, it's not as reliable as it need to be when you make an important decision, and I don't want to disbore, well, at least this superintendent, we not introduce another reform initiative, we are taking into consideration the readiness of the organization, in terms of the skill set, in terms of people understanding where we're going with this, and we also have all the initiative that I comment, the common core, which we, you're gonna get a presentation, is a serious initiative, and that is the curriculum that we are required to implement, a minimal, the common core. We could have an AP curriculum throughout the district, or an IB, but it has to be an approved curriculum by the state of New York. The other reason is financial, the other reason is partnership, this we require partnership, not just with teachers and administration, but also the community. And when I say level of readiness, I'm not talking about just the school system, I'm talking about this community as well. I'm talking about our high school students, I'm talking about our business community. If I were to ask then, like, and the Northeast College Prep Wegmans, for example, made a commitment that any child qualified for would get a job. You cannot just offer more time to kid unless you have a very inviting, attractive menu. I mentioned art, music, sport, extracurricular activities, tutoring, rigorous curriculum. So it's more than just expanding the time, but that's an excellent question.
Let me just offer, we had him at Baden Street, but we also got Dr. Rivera, I mean, some of Jomaz Kajufu and his work around, you know, educating African-American kids, and one of the things he talks about is time on task. And he presented to us the data that shows the amount of time that Asians spend on task, the amount of time whites spends on time, on task, and the amount of time the blacks spend, and it was much lower. So a huge issue is time, time on task.
Correct.
You know, and so we need to look at that. He also talked about research that was available about demographic disconnect, and the reason that we have, one of the reasons that we have the issues with boys, for example. The study, the study talked about, I think it was done in England or somewhere, when you have a high male teacher population, you have females who are going to be suspended the most. And you could just conversely say, if you have a high female population, you're going to see a lot of, and, and white females, you're going to see a lot of blacks who are being disconnected, because they don't understand each other. And so, whereas, you know, boys have to move around, girls sit down, you know, you're going to have, say, a teacher, female teacher, who's going to penalize that young boy for moving around, him being more mechanical. So I would, I would ask that that research be looked at, and other research around that, so that we're not making decisions on our children based on our worldview, but understanding where the children's worldview come into, into play. And I would also take into consideration when you talk about, you know, reading levels. You know, kids are now doing the social media, and, and a lot of those reading skills that they had, or could have, are now being diminished because of the kind of abbreviated language that you're finding in social media. So I don't know how to address that, but I certainly think that that's something for discussion, and that we should take into consideration.
Thank you. And better on this, Commissioner Elliott, the time on task is, is longstanding research that, that is available to us, and is incorporated in this framework, precisely that is what it's all about. But you also have to be careful, for our urban children, they need to have access to high-quality music, sport, and it's, it's not just the core, as we used to think about, time on task is extremely important, and that's precisely what is at the center. You won't close the achievement gap unless you close the time on task gap. It's very clear. Clear to me, and clear to the Ford Foundation, and it's clear to teacher. And in our case, as I mentioned earlier, in order to help mitigate the, how children spend time, sometimes at home, they might not get the support to do their homework, or to understand a complex problem, part of this framework is to say that we are going to offer the opportunity at the school for them to engage in meaningful work, academic work, and also in all the type of activity.
And I'll say this, and I'll be done with for right now. I also believe that somehow there needs to be a media blitz, meaning that we know as experts, the, the number of words the students should come in prepared to learn. Our parents may not know that, and so somehow, we've got to inform our parents, even those who we think don't want, don't want, don't care about their children. I'm sure that they care about their children, they just don't know. And I think somehow, we've got to take on a media blitz to give those kinds, that kind of information, to be able to help them to educate their children. So I would ask for that to be considered as well. Whatever those, those prerequisites are that are needed to come in day one ready, we need to be informing our parents about that. Remember, we've got a number of parents who are dropouts themselves and don't know.
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner White?
As you know, Superintendent Vargas, I submitted an email on September the 26th, 2012, to you and my colleagues, calling for a 90 or 100-day plan. What prompted me, of course, to make this request was the recent report from the SHOT Foundation, which sadly described the city of Rochester as ranking dead last in the United States of America for graduating black males. I indicated in my email, of course, your administration is not responsible for this. This problem is decades in the making, and it actually goes beyond what we as leaders try to do in this building, and what leaders try to do in our schools. But nonetheless, we are shouldered with the responsibility of addressing this particular and urgent problem. Additionally, I noted in that email on September the 26th, that Rochester, again, has a sad designation of being noted to rank seventh in child poverty. In the brief time that I've been on this board, I think it went from 14 to 11, to now seven. And again, obviously, no one would blame this administration, or even anybody on this board for that problem, but we have once again are shouldered with the responsibility of addressing that serious problem. And I, I called for a 90 or 100-day plan, because quite frankly, presidents do it, mayors do it, superintendents, and governors, and legislative bodies, when they are faced with a crisis, and sometimes when there is no crisis, they articulate what their priorities are, how they will manage their workload, how they will measure their performance, and how the performance of others under their charge will be assessed. I am very glad to see that in your presentation today, we were given some insight as to what the plan is. I was especially pleased to see that there are long-term and short-term goals. A couple of quick observations. I think it would be helpful, in my humble opinion, if the board were provided an advanced copy of this, so that we could offer, for what it's worth, our humble opinion on this plan that I think is, was referred to as a call to action. I think that would be very helpful. One of the observations that, that I would make is that the plan does not delineate any timeframe. You may not think that 90 or 100 days is appropriate way to describe your plan, but whatever you believe is appropriate, I believe, once again, in my humble opinion, that it ought to articulate what timeframe you expect to accomplish some of these laudable goals. Additionally, I would make the observation that in the short-term presentation, the presentation with respect to short-term goals, it identifies, bless you Sophie, it identifies three schools, Northeast College Prep, number nine, and All City High. I don't have the percentages, but I would imagine this is a very, 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 very small percentage of the district's overall population. I don't have the percentages of black males, or black females, or Latino males, or Latino females, in that particular, in those particular high schools, but I would again imagine, it's probably as a percentage, a very small percentage of our student population. And for me, while it is an example of the efforts that your administration has engaged in, I, I'm concerned, I would be concerned, that it doesn't articulate what we're going to do by way of example, and with respect to the remaining students in our district. I also think that your description of long-term goals, and again, I'm just reviewing this as it was presented now, you indicate that 20% of the students should be involved in extended learning, and I believe, again, I was taking very bad notes, but I believe it said by the end of next year, I think, as Commissioner Elliott said. I think that's a, you know, and I understand Commissioner Elliott's concern, but I think you've pointed out a target, and I think that is most critical. I would respectfully suggest that you need to do more of that, that we need to identify more targets, because the only target that you've identified in this particular presentation is, and it's a good one, don't get me wrong, but that 20% of our students... it's a good one, don't get me wrong, but that 20% of our students should be involved in extended reading. For example, I would suggest that there be targets with respect to the number of parents that are going to be involved district-wide, in district initiatives. We ought to be measuring what our parental engagement goals are. And we have tools, we have entities by which we can do that measurement. We have school-based planning teams, we have parent-teacher associations. We can indicate where we think we need to be. We need to take a baseline, and we need to say, a year from now, where we're going to be, because this district, as you've indicated in your remarks, will not get better until parents are fully engaged in their child's education. I would also suggest that there's opportunities for the administration and for this board to offer up its specific input in terms of specific programs. I frankly believe, and I've spoken to a couple of board members, and this is part of working on a team, that this district ought to reinstitute reading teachers in our schools. Suburban districts have them, we should have them. So as part of your short-term or long-term, 90-day, 180-day, 100-day plan, tell us, hopefully, that we're going to get reading teachers to help our parents and our teachers get kids up to speed. Because you are absolutely right. If the kid is not where he needs to be in reading proficiency by third grade, he is not going to graduate in four years, and he will just be another SHOT Foundation statistic. The reason why I sent you that email was I believe it's critical to explain to the community, not just to this board, and in that respect, I would say, if this presentation could be made community-friendly, I think it ought to be presented to the entire community so that they can get a sense as to where this administration is going. I tried to use the analogy, and perhaps imperfectly, of what is happening in Louisiana. People certainly want the floods to stop. That is a goal. But we have to do more than that. People, as you said, Dr. Vargas, people want to know how you're going to do it. They want to know how the levy will be fixed. As some, I was talking to somebody else who didn't maybe appreciate my levy argument as much, I thought this one worked really well. They said, yeah, you're playing football, you know where the goal line is. Everybody knows you want to get to the goal line. But who's calling the plays and what are the plays? How are you going to get first down? It is fourth quarter, how are we going to get our first down? What's the play on second down? What's the play on third down? People want that kind of detail. They know who the quarterback is, they know who the players are, but they want to know how you're going to get downfield. And when you have a crisis, like we have now, we rank dead last behind Detroit, they graduate twice as many African-American men as we do. This is a crisis that recalls for a comprehensive and complete plan so our citizens can have some confidence about where we are taking them. The levies have broken, and citizens want to know how we're going to fix them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for the superintendent? All right, thank you. We move on to standing.
Let me say that the State of New York is part of the focus work that this board has to be. We cannot have 20 plan. Over 50%, only four schools in your district are exempt from sending a plan. So we are going to focus our work through that plan, that is going to be submitted to the State of New York, about the work. In the immediate future, we are working daily on attendance because that's the key driver for student achieving and the truance, and that's what I've been asking, Commissioner White, you're absolutely correct. There's a sense of urgency here, and the sense of urgency begins, we're getting in school.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner Powell.
Until, Dr. Vargas, you said it has to be focused on the State of New York and compliance. I wouldn't have said anything, but I have to say, when it comes to the SHOT report, that I believe that we are reaping, as a city, what has been sown. And I am not talking about what happens in the Rochester City Schools. Commissioner White has a book, titled F It. And he talks about why, having visited the jails, why kids have dropped out, and the sense of frustration that they carry. Well, this city has gone through a few years now of zero tolerance that involves harassing our young black men. And I think that we are reaping, as a city, what we have sown. And I don't believe that we need to focus exclusively on State of New York. Certainly to improve our overall graduations, yes. Certainly to improve all the other metrics that the state measures us by. But when it comes to the black male dropout issue, we have to have the help of the city of Rochester and this police department. And we have to talk seriously about the impact of the zero tolerance practices that target young black men for everything from riding a bike without a bell to loitering on street corners. There's the assumption that they're up to nefarious deeds, and the general result is that children are saying, well, if I'm going to be accused of it anyway, I might as well do it. We are, as a city, reaping what we sow. We have to have a conversation with the mayor and with the police chief in order to start to ameliorate the very genuinely held beliefs these young men have that are absolutely grounded in their personal experience.
All right, student rep.
Can I just add some comment to that if I could? Because there was an example, there was a parent that contacted me today, and I think that we also have to look at what we're doing internally. And this is where I get frustrated, because you have a kid who was high honor roll student, and the parent said that the student at Freddie Thomas, the student wore the wrong color shirt. Still had Freddie Thomas on it, but had the wrong colored shirt. They put him in the in-school suspension program for two days. See, we got to get, I mean, what sense does that make? That you would take him out of the academic setting because he had the wrong shirt? So some of our own policies in our district don't support learning for black men and for our students in general. And so I think we have to also look at those issues as well. And I will be sending you, Mr. Superintendent, an email around that because, you know, we have to look inside of what we're doing that just doesn't make sense. You know, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. Last word, Commissioner White. Unless you guys want to be here till midnight, I'm okay with that.
Well, I'm okay with that if we had to. I think this is an important subject, and I think it does require some deliberation. Because the reality is, after we finish our executive session, we are going to go home and occasionally send some emails. And this is an important subject, and the subject is, how do we build that confidence, given the interactions that people have in schools, interactions that people have in the street? And I, and I do want you all to know that I'm not comfortable with how this discussion is ended. Since this is our meeting, it's awkward because they're sitting out there. But this is our meeting. This is where we're talking about how we're going to go forward. And I don't need an answer today, but I would like to know, is it fair? And I sent out an email, as I said, September 26th. Is it a fair request to ask our superintendent to fine-tune and build on what he has just presented, and ask for some kind of plan? A 90-day, a 180-day, a 350-day, some kind of plan? Can I get a response to that?
Yeah, I think, Commissioner White, we handed out the, we're going to be meeting with the superintendent very soon regarding the board governance goals and things, and I think that that will be the appropriate time definitely to do that. And I think we're doing that before the end of October.
Okay. All right, fair enough. And I did want to mention one other thing, a point of information. Dr. John Jackson, the CEO of the SHOT Foundation, will be on WDKX tomorrow morning with me and call in, ask him the hard questions. I heard Dr. Vargas say he had some concerns about the numbers and how they were presented. I'd encourage Dr. Vargas to call. Let's have a.
You didn't hear me say that.
Well, I read it in the paper. I apologize.
I haven't said that to the paper, so I'd like to know which paper.
I think he was talking about, I think he was talking about some other numbers.
Wham.
Yeah.
Was it wham? Well, whatever. It's there somewhere. And it might be inaccurate, because it wouldn't be the first time that the media inaccurately, did not accurately report.
Commissioner White, they correct 100% of the time.
Well, whatever. Tomorrow, tomorrow, you get on the air, you call in, mother, father, parent, administrator, preacher, call in and make your own statement or ask your own question. Let's have some dialogue about this very important issue. But let's not just talk about it, let's have a plan. People deserve that.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Student reports, you have a report for a student? Welcome back, welcome back. We missed you over the summer.
Thank you. I missed you guys too. But it was really busy. So I had a meeting with the Student Leadership Congress advisors yesterday, and our first meeting with the whole group will be in October, the Wednesday before the board meeting. But Student Leadership Congress went on a lot of education-based trips over the summer. One was to Washington, DC, which was a great experience because we got to know students from all, from different schools around the district and make a bond there. But also, we met kids from all around the nation who are interested in politics and government, and kind of reforming education, and being involved in possibly politics or government when we grow up too. So it was an amazing trip. And we also met some interesting people like Louise Slaughter and different people from our House of Representatives in Congress, so. But we're going to do a presentation in October with the kids who went to Washington, so stay tuned. And then one more thing is, students and community members such as Mr. Dana Miller and Mrs. Lovely Warren, and Ms. Mary Hartstein, and Ms. Ann Kresh went to the Children's Defense Fund Conference in July. And basically, what the Children's Defense Fund is, is it's an organization that advocates for children of all ages, whether they may be, it advocates for poverty, education, all topics that affect our youth today. And in this conference, we, there were a lot of keynote speakers, including Mary Edelman Wright and Maya Angelo, and also Trayvon Martin's parents spoke, and that a room filled with over 1,000 people was silent, and many people were crying because they were so powerful, their message. So I just wanted to convey that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is our parent rep here? All right. If there's a written report, we can take it as written. We move on to the Excellence in Student Achievement Committee report. Commissioner White.
Yeah, I want to thank Jackie Morgan. I know she's not here, but she wrote an extensive three-page report, which I will not read. You all have.
Come on, man, read it. No, I'm kidding.
I'll have it as part of your packet. I will summarize it, though. We've, we had a Excellent Student Achievement Committee meeting on September the 29th, 2012. We talked about the proposal that came up quite some time ago. I offered a resolution that we should consider as a school board replicating the School of the Arts. One, our parent rep indicated in a very forceful way that this was a brand that could stop the hemorrhaging. You know, this district, and Dr. Vargas has repeatedly and correctly talked about the fact that we are losing students to charter schools, and we're losing them to private schools, because there's something quote-unquote "better" for them, the grass is greener. So one of the reasons why I presented, you guys may recall this, this idea of replicating SOTA, we called it SOTA Two or SOTA West, I don't care what you call it, but call it best practices, and call it branding. And my thought was, and actually, it wasn't an original thought, a lot of people out there were saying it, let's recreate a model that works, that will keep our parents in this district. And sadly, and regretfully, the administration has indicated at that Excellent Student Achievement Committee that they will not replicate that model. That, and I cannot articulate, bless you, the position of the administration, it is, I think, accurately contained in the report by Ms. Morgan, and they did issue a PowerPoint, which is available. But I think this is a sad and unfortunate decision. And I think what the superintendent, one of his greatest fears, is going to continue to come to fruition. Students in this district, families in this district will continue to leave us because we don't have the kind of menu of options, the portfolio, that would entice our students to stay here. We have replicated models from outside this district, college board, expeditory learning, but we can't even replicate. We don't have the courage or the insight to replicate what we've developed in our own district. It's sad. And what will keep our kids here is music and the arts. And by the way, this idea was fully vetted before the Excellence Student Achievement Committee. We examined how many students applied to get into SOTA, and the number of students that were not eligible to get in, and whether they could have gotten in if there was more room. And data overwhelmingly said that there is a demand for this product. But once again, the administration says no. My only commitment to this community, and this is the community's idea, not mine, is that I have not, and absolutely unequivocally will state to you, that I have not and will not give up on this idea. We are not done. And ultimately, the Board of Education makes decisions about where this administration, where the school needs to go, this district needs to go. And we need schools that are enticing, engaging, and interesting, and we have a model in this community that works. And one of the explanations that was given was, well, we've got 55 schools where priority and focus that we have to work on. The bottom line is, the reality is, we have to do something with those schools. And the administration's response was, well, we have to have music in all of our schools. We have to have art in all of our schools. Amen, says the choir. But if you, if the state is telling you, you've got to do something with 55 schools, what is the logical, rational basis for not replicating what you know works? What you know pulls people in? As Kevin Costner said, if you build it, they will follow. Is there doubt in anybody's mind that if you replicate SOTA, our parents and our students will follow? You want to stop the hemorrhaging, create something that is a bond that will keep kids in school. And we know that is music. And with parents, we know that is SOTA. And then finally, Mr. President, we examined the administration's proposal for SES services. That proposal, as my colleagues know, is Resolution 234, I believe, and I'll reserve my comments for once we get to that particular resolution. That concludes my report. I would note that we are scheduled to meet again on October the 15th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Powell and the Finance Committee.
Yes, thank you. Finance Committee met September 13th, which was a Thursday. We first and foremost reviewed the July and August financial reports, which at this stage are unaudited reports. At this time, I would ask, I move that those reports be received by the Board of Ed.
There's a motion down the floor to accept the finance reports, which members in their packet and should have reviewed, and they also have been reviewed by the Finance Committee. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Motion. Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions on the motion on the floor? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The ayes have it. Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. This was also the month for the Quarterly Student Activity Funds Report, and the committee approved of those. And I, at this time, move that those reports be received by the full board.
There is a motion on the floor to approve the fourth quarter Student Activities Report again, which members should have received in their packet and reviewed, and it's gone to the Finance Committee. I'll entertain a second to Commissioner Powell's motion.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion or questions on the Student Activities Report for the fourth quarter, ending 2011 and 2012? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Thank you, Commissioner Powell.
Okay, finally, we reviewed Resolutions 191 through 217. 191 was a procurement and supply resolution. Resolutions 192 through 217 were facilities. I can see one face in the audience who's particularly keen on seeing those advance. And all of the resolutions that went through the Finance Committee were approved without exception. So that is the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Our next meeting will be October 18th, which is again a Thursday, following the Policy Committee.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Cruz, and the Policy Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We met on September 18th, had a pretty full agenda. Large discussion, long discussion regarding the optimization and minimizing cross-zone student placement and transportation. We, this is such an issue with, it has so many implications and so complex, that we're going to continue the conversation on it, but more importantly, we're going to be having a meeting. But more importantly, we're going to be having a meeting, a small little mini-summit of staff from Transportation, our Policy Committee, our Zone Chiefs, so that we can have a much more in-depth, kinda in-the-weeds discussion about what the implications are of minimizing the effects of cross-zone transportation. That's going to be taking place the beginning of October, we hope. We also talked about the proposed revision to the drug-free workplace policy to require pre-employment drug testing. We're gonna continue that conversation in our next meeting. And we're, and the proposed revision to the Code of Conduct to prohibit the use of electronic devices while students are taking New York State assessments. Also with the possibility that principals might have, will have the opportunity, if they deem that these devices are disruptive, that they could take action as well. And that is also a continuing conversation as well. Policy proposals, talked about regarding school closure. It was a recommendation, one of our commissioners, Commissioner White, that we begin talking about putting together a policy with regard to how we close our schools and the implications of that. And I think we have a really good start on that, on that policy. We had a great discussion. We've got input from both staff and also from our own staff. So, hopefully, we'll be putting together a policy that I think everybody will be satisfied with. Also review the approval of the Policy Committee goals for 2012, 2013. And in addition, you have in your packets this evening for vote, they're pretty much technical changes to three policies. Policy 1130, Media Relations Policy, 2460, Policy Review and Evaluations, and 4830.1, District Community Collaborative Presentations Programs and Services. What we're eliminating in those three positions, those three policies is just basically the need to have annual reviews of them. We just didn't feel that there was appropriate to have. And what we're doing, we're going through with our policy manual is really picking out things that we can just save us some time and be a little bit more efficient in terms of how we review our policies. And it really didn't seem like these were so monumentally important that we have to review them every year. So, we're going to just have that reduced and taken out from the particular policy. In this upcoming meeting, we're going to be talking about reviewing input on the conclusions reached at the mini-summit in October. We'll also be talking about policy proposal, reviewing the school closure process. We'll continue that conversation, as well as the pre-employment drug testing policies, and examining methods for monitoring implementation of board policies. Continue to review our policy manual and review additional policies needed due to recent legislation. Our next meeting of the Policy Committee is scheduled for Thursday, October the 18th at 5:30. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner, first off, let me welcome back Commissioner Elliott, so-
Y'all had two months of peace.
It's very good to have you-
I'm back.
Very good to have you back.
We missed you.
Good to see you smiling. You were a man.
We missed you.
And I don't know if you wanna-
Yes, I do, yes, I do. I'm gonna take up to the personal privilege. Let me just first say, on a real personal note, I happen to be just taking regular routine exams. And whoop, there was a problem. And so, and no symptoms or anything. And so, I would just recommend to this audience, the audience by internet, and if we're still on television, that make sure you get your regular routine visits because you just never know. I had no symptoms, and all of a sudden, you know, I'm out for two months. And so, I would just share that with the audience, both in here and externally. And also, let me just thank the Board for, separate from that, on the policy of, the recruitment policy of passing that. Now, in addition to the certification, we're asking in the hiring that you have at least two years of urban experience to work in this district. That's going to help us to be able to make better administrative decisions and also make better classroom management decisions. So, I'm very excited with that. I'd like for it to be about five to seven years, but, you know, I'll accept two years at this point. And then, lastly, I just want to welcome the new staff that Dr. Vargas has hired, Patty Missouri, I forgot the, our Chief Attorney's name now, Ed Lopez, and Bill Ansbro. And I'm looking forward to working with, and Anita Murphy, excuse me. I'm looking forward to working with-
Beverly, Beverly, where else?
And Beverly. I think I saw Beverly before I went out. But I want to just welcome you and looking forward to working with you. I think that we're gonna do some great things for our district. And, you know, Anita Murphy got a chance to meet with me in the parking lot where I said I was gonna have her arrested if she turned the way she, that illegal turn. There's Commissioner Elliott, right? So, but welcome. I really think that we're going to do some great work, and I look forward to working with you. And then, we haven't had CGIR meeting, but we will have one scheduled. It's scheduled for October 16th. And that concludes my report and comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott, and welcome back once again.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campbell?
Okay, the Governance Committee met, and we discussed the Superintendent's Performance Evaluation, as well as, were submitted the goals by the Superintendent. So, for your reading pleasure, is the tool to use in order to evaluate the Superintendent. This is an informational item for this month. And then, we'd love to get input, feedback. This is what we've used the past few years, and this was approved by our current Superintendent as well. So, a few years back, we did a lot of research in terms of what were best practices. So, we figured, why recreate the wheel? It was already good as it is, as a tool. But also, always welcome input. In terms of the goals, you now have them. This is what the Superintendent has put forth. And one of the things that I did hear you say was that you're looking to put measurables behind this because I think that that'll help to make it a lot more concrete, at least for myself and I'm sure my colleagues as well. So, we would love to see that and what that would look like for this school year. And, a reminder, we do have a Board-Cabinet Retreat on October 20th. Write that down. Make sure we're in attendance. Let Shanae know that if you can, actually, that you can make it. It'll be fun. And it'll be a good opportunity because, you know, in my other job as a facilitator, working with teams and organizations, you know, right now, we've got a lot of different people. We don't have, the relationships, we don't really know where each other stand, and we have very limited exposure to each other. So, we're at the very infancy stage when it comes to teams. So, in order to help us to be able to accelerate, so we can get more towards the maturation stage, we have to have these types of vehicles, venues, in order to be able to build that. So, especially with such a new team, it's incredibly important if we're gonna be able to work together to have these types of forums and events. So that, make sure to put that in the calendar. And, just one point of personal privilege, Dr. Vargas did allude. We had a, the Greater Rochester Health Foundation hosted a press conference in talking about the, all of the great things that they're doing within the district based on the wellness policy that we passed two years ago, year and a half ago. And so, they have given up to, close to a million dollars to our district in order to make sure that we can be able to really implement the wellness policy as it should be. And it was amazing. It was at school 19, and the kids were just awesome. They were dancing to Beyonce in the gym, and they were having fun. And it was, it was interesting because when they did the recess, when they asked kids what they wanted to do for physical activity, they said, "We want to do dancing, we want to do zumba, we want all sorts of things." So, they actually sought input from the students on what they wanted, as opposed to just assuming. So, it was really neat to be able to see it in action at 19. So, thank you all. There was a bunch of staff that were there to celebrate it, too. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Adams, in the Audit Committee?
The Audit Committee did not meet in the month of September. Our next meeting is October 9th at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Just a real brief report, colleagues, the Board meeting in December, because of the holidays, are gonna be moved up to December 13th. So, hopefully, we can get any important resolutions administration done in the October-November business meeting. So that way, the December 13th meeting can be quick, and we can enjoy the holiday season. I want to remind my colleagues that the New York State School Boards Association will be here meeting. The district has been asked to do a, one of the workshops. And I volunteered some Board members to participate in that. So, I'll be calling you to let you know that I passed your name on to Joyce Brown from the Caucus of Minority School Boards Association to do some presentations. So, you'll hear from me on that. And then, I also want to, I had the opportunity to participate. Commissioner White also participated this weekend in a panel on bullying. Commissioner White, what was the name of the organization? Can't remember the name. San, not San Kofa, it was, yeah. Yeah, well, we-
I was there.
Yeah, well, we participated in a, and what I liked about the panel was that they had students that talked about bullying. And one of the things they talked about was what actually constitutes bullying in all of its context. And it was a very informative afternoon. And also, one of our staff members showed a video that was done by students at one of our schools on the issue of bullying. And that was very, very informative. Also, Commissioner Adams and I and staff member Lee had the opportunity to attend All-City High. I want to thanks Sandy Jordan for showing us around the building. I will let you know, Mr. Underwood, that I've looked at that facility marshal for a long time. That's one of the cleanest I've seen a lot of our schools. I was very impressed with the physical plant of that building, including the improvements that took place to the auditorium. But overall, just the overall brightness of the facilities. And I hope that, as I make my visits around the rest of the district, that all of our schools will be modeled after the level of All-City. I would also add, Commissioner Campbell, because of you, I wanted to get something out of the vending machine, and they didn't have any Snickers. All they had were these healthy snacks that were- So, thanks a lot for the, so just so you know, your wellness policy is taking root in the district. Healthy snacks are all in these machines, and none of the stuff really tastes all that good.
My pleasure.
So, and just so you know, at our October meeting, we will be honoring Hispanic Heritage Month, but we also will be hearing from students that participated, Sophie, in the Washington DC trip. And I believe that Congressman Slaughter may come, maybe, to talk about the experience that she had with you students. So, these student reps are powerful. They can get congresspeople to come to meetings. So, thank you, Sophie, for that. We're gonna move on to the consideration of resolutions. We do have an executive session tonight, and I handed everyone a sheet. There are gonna be some resolutions that we're gonna vote on after executive session. And those resolutions are 164, 167, 231, 237, and 238. 237 and 238 go together, they're companion resolutions. And then, the other three are related, there's some personnel issues related around some of those, some of those three. So, we'll take 164, 167, 231, 237, and 238 in executive session. What we will start with now are resolutions numbered 164 through 190, with the exception of 164 and 167, which we will discuss in executive session. So, I'll entertain a motion for resolutions numbered 164 through 190, with the exception of 164 through 167.
There's requests to move up the testing resolution, if possible, because there's several members of the audience.
Yes, and we'll move up the testing resolutions right after the HR resolutions. What number is the testing resolution?
229.
229. So, we'll deal with 164 through 190, with the exception of 164 through 167, and then move up to 90. I have a move, a move to resolutions by Commissioner White. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams. Questions around 164, 164 through 190, with the exception of 164 through 167? And again, these questions need to be germane to human capital initiatives. And if they are related to a specific individual, we can take those in executive session at the end of the meeting.
President Evans?
Yes, Commissioner Elliott?
Question on Resolution 177, just a general question. And it is, why are, what is the, what are some of the general reasons why provisional appointments are rescinded? Just a general response to that, is what I need.
Dr. Centrone from Human Resources? Are you a doctor?
She's a lawyer.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm giving you a-
Still a doctor.
You're still a doctor. So, Dr. Centrone, yes?
Those particular resolutions were rescinded because the appointments were made by error. I didn't catch them soon enough to get them off the board resolutions for last month.
How do we make them by error? Did we already give them the job?
No, no, they were not already, they were not appointed. They just should not have been a provisional appointment. They were to non-competitive or temporary, out-of-title work positions, and they shouldn't have been listed as a provisional appointment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott.
And then, just, I'd like to make an amendment to Resolution 188. Is this the appropriate time to do that?
If you do, one second, let me just turn-
Because I don't want to vote on all of those. I usually vote no on these resolutions when it discusses extra pay. But the one, the Resolution 188, where it's, the description, it's, it's to facilitate the 9/11 simulated move to All-City High School program in the site of the new public safety program. I've been really involved in that, and so I want to support that.
What is, what page is that?
It's on page 118.
Okay.
But I don't want to support the other, the other part of the resolution. So, if we can make that-
If there's no objections, I'll make that 188A. And then, the rest will be 188B.
Thank you.
And if there's not any objections to that-
So, that's, do we need to make a motion on that?
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna make it if there's no objections. I'm just gonna just mark, make it 188A.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else on Human Capital Initiatives, Initiatives 164 through 190, with the exception of 164 and 167?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Resolution 184, the funding source for those positions is the Race to the Top funding. And I call that out because I continue to believe that the premise on Race to the Top is faulty and that it's asking us to spend money, state taxpayer money, in a way that does not actually support the classroom in any meaningful way. And we'll be voting against that.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Anything else on 164 through 190, with the exception of 164 through 167?
Mr. President, I would just note, and I don't need a response now, but I would note that some of these resolutions are, I've seen at least once, where the teacher is referenced as being assigned to "I'm Ready." I know Beverly and Anita and Mary and I have been talking about that. And I know you have as well. If, I'm assuming, is that an error that it's being called "I'm Ready"? That teacher's being called "I'm Ready," an "I'm Ready" teacher? Okay. And I don't need an answer now, but that's where they're assigned. But, the Board issued a resolution that said, "That program's not gonna exist anymore, and we're still calling it 'I'm Ready.'" I know through our conversations, you're working at changing the design of that. And, but I, and I think one of the things we talked about is we said, the name would change. To change the direction of that program. We don't want to continue to call it "I'm Ready" in resolutions or otherwise. So, I'm hoping that we get around to doing that as soon as possible. I know you're working on it, but- Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Anything else on 164 through 190, and again, with the exception of 164 and 167? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of 164 through 190, then I'll just go down the line. Actually, I won't go down the line. People can state their no's or abstentions. Commissioner White?
Yes, to all.
Except for, except for 180, Commissioner White abstains.
I have to abstain.
I got it, I got it, I got the list here written, branded.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner-
I told you that happened.
Yeah, there's one.
That's why I got my list here. Commissioner Powell?
187.
Thank you.
I abstain.
Okay, you abstained from 187?
Yes.
Any no's? Commissioner Powell, you have a no?
A no on 184, yes to all others.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Elliott, you had a no on?
Well, you know, I have a lot of no's in my presence. No on 167, 168, 185 through 188, and yes for 188A, and no on 189.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have not yet considered 167.
Okay.
Yeah, that'd be an, after executive.
Okay.
Commissioner Campos?
187.
Thank you, abstain.
Abstain.
Um, Commissioner, um, Adams?
Yes.
And I, I vote yes to all, except for abstaining on, um, 188. Okay, 191 is procurement and supply. Uh, this is just a simple, not a, no resolution is simple, but this went through the Finance Committee, 191, so moved. Is moved by Commissioner White. Is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Any, uh, questions on 191? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. 192 is the fun stuff. It's the educational facilities that keep our buildings in tip-top shape.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner White.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Cruz. Uh, point of order, Commissioner, uh, Powell?
You, you only cited the first resolution. There's a whole string of them.
191, no, we, we voted on 191, but now we're on 192 through 217.
Through 217, thank you.
Yep, so it was moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Cruz. Um, discussion on 192 through 217? I don't know if you want to add anything, Commissioner Powell, from the Finance Committee. These are routine maintenance and, um...
Yeah, they're not all, they're not all routine, but they've all been approved by the Finance Committee.
Fully vetted.
Fully vetted, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Uh, 218, I'm sorry, I was gonna move, I was gonna move up, let me move up the testing resolution. Commissioner, uh, Adams, you're supposed to catch me. Let's, uh, move up to 90. I'll entertain a motion for 290.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner.
229.
I'm sorry, 229. It's been moved by Commissioner Elliott. Um, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner White. Just let me say, um, uh, thank you for, uh, the board under work around this resolution. We, we talked about this at length at our last meeting. Um, we had, we had a great discussion around, around the resolution and again, this is a resolution that is being adopted, um, across the, the country by many, many school districts similar to Rochester. Uh, Commissioner Adams, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add on 229?
No, I think we'll keep discussion for future resolutions.
That's right.
Taking some time. Um, if there's any questions for my colleagues, I'd be happy to answer and clarify.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm new.
Yeah, oh yeah, that's right.
So if you can give me some historical, where this came from, um, and what the intent is and, uh, what are we expecting the state to do? As I read this, what I didn't see is some recommendations that we are provided to the state in terms of if we don't want to have this kind of testing, what's the alternative?
Right, and that's excellent and that actually came up and I think that, um, I'm expecting a friendly amendment addressing some alternative assessments from a colleague on the board.
It's actually already in there, Commissioner Adams, the second resolved.
Oh, in the version?
In the version in front of us.
I only have one resolved.
This is the two-page version.
Okay, so that is the one that we are approving is the one with the amendments.
All right, so I only see one resolve in this.
Right, so the yellow copy does not have the additional resolved sections that do cover assessments, which is a really important question and was raised and suggestions were made at the last meeting to amend, so that language has been included.
So can you just talk a little bit about what that, what we're trying to do?
Sure, in terms of the background of, of this resolution, um, throughout the United States, a number of, um, school boards, particularly in Texas and Florida, the National Parent Teacher Association Organization, um, that, I believe the NEA, I, I read actually the...
NAACP.
Right, NAACP Legal Defense Fund, Education Fund, um, several other prominent organizations which I listed, I read into the record at the last meeting, drafted and wrote this resolution calling for a de-emphasis, de-emphasis on high-stakes standardized testing. So it's, it's not calling for the abolishment of all tests by any means, but it's calling for a more meaningful, um, set of complements of assessments, um, that would be less harmful in terms of narrowing of the curriculum, um, driving excellent teachers from the profession out of, out of frustration with, um, these negative pressures that have been shown, you know, that there's tons of research, as our speakers spoke to, um, that demonstrates the devastating effects of overemphasis on high-stakes testing within school systems.
I don't, I'm, I'm a little hesitant because it, I really don't see specifically what you're asking the state to do. And so, um, it seems that we wouldn't want to just support this if we don't know what we're asking the state to do and we should.
Right.
We should know and we should be specific about what we would like for them to do in the resolution because if we send this resolution to the state, um, we need to know, we want to make sure that we're influencing public policy such that it benefits our students and, and I don't, I don't see that in this. So, uh, I don't know what kind of amendment or support that you need to do. Is this something that we can, well, you all discussed it, so you may, all may want to vote on it, but it would seem to me that this may be something that we really want, that we may want to table, to be able to really come up with a, um, a cogent plan that we'd like to be able to influence on state level. Uh, and maybe you have, I just, you know, I haven't been around, so that's just my, my thinking around it. It just, it, it seems to be generalized to me and not saying very much and it's not a, a criticism. My only thought is, is that we want to be specific when we go to the state, asking them to change policy so that it benefits the Rochester City School District and other districts who have the similar issues that we're having in the state.
I, I couldn't agree more and I see this as a first step. I don't think that it would be necessary to table this, but that this could be seen as sort of a first step, articulating the fact that we have put thought and discussion into the language that has been offered up by our national experts who are reflecting, you know, collective thought from throughout public school districts, so that we see this as, as more of a, um, an initial commitment to looking more into exactly what we can do. And I mean, there's many examples, I don't want to take time tonight in terms of, um, examples of, um, that were cited among the speakers in terms of alternative, um, richer ways of assessing our students and in terms of teaching and learning. For example, I received an email supporting this from a school, the arts teacher who's concerned because with the implementation of APPR, they're not going to be able to do the same assessments that they do in their courses anymore, which involved really rich experience of students developing videos and collaborating cross-discipline and that was their final assessment, but now that's been taken away as an option. So, and they see that as very harmful and is, is, um, eliminating the opportunity for these students to demonstrate and develop those skills. So, so I think, you know, there are specific examples of educators who are promoting, and the consortium of, um, schools is, is another example that offers very tested and, um, proven methods of multiple assessments.
Commissioner Powell?
Um, this is more a point of order. Because what's on board docs does only have the one resolved and that is our, sort of our official position.
It's been updated.
I'm looking at board docs right now.
Yeah, I see three resolves.
You see, you see three resolves?
Refresh.
Refresh, refresh.
Do a refresh. All right, so if, if, if this refresh works, we don't need a friendly amendment, is that correct?
That's right. Yeah, I'm looking at Commissioner, um, Campos', I mean, Campos', Commissioner Cruz's, uh, tablet. Yeah, it had the three resolves.
Specifically to that one.
Oh, 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 right there?
Right, right here, um, Commissioner Powell.
All right, let me try.
One, two, three, three resolves.
Um, well, while I have the floor, I do want to say that, um, the second resolved, uh, being the one that supports the performance-based assessment models used by alternative schools represented by the New York State Performance, uh, Performance Standards Consortium is pretty specific. That it, that the models that they use are, are well-established and have been for dozens of years now. Um, the, one of the speakers suggested that there was insufficient action item as well and I want to address that by saying that the final resolve in making this resolution widely available as a tool for advocates is our action out of this particular document. Um, it's, it's, um, it becomes a mechanism for all advocates and, uh, those who might write letters to our governor or especially to our, our members of the Board of Regents that alternative school models work and they should be allowed to not only, um, measure using those alternative me, uh, measures, but also be permitted to thrive, which since Commissioner Mills took his office as, um, uh, Education Commissioner, alternative schools have not been a, able to thrive or, um, in fact, the best we've been able to do is provide waivers from some of the Regents' exams. So, um, but they still have to sit through several other Regents' exams. So this does have an action item and it is quite specific insofar as it tell, it indicates, uh, this board's position on, on the relative place of standardized tests, but also what the alternatives are.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott.
Uh, let's, let's take that first resolve for example and I'll go down to, um, the third, um, line that says, well, I'll, I'll, I'll start, "Resolved that the Rochester City School District Board of Education calls upon the New York State Education Department, the New York State Legislature, and the Governor to reexamine public school accountability systems." So what do we want them to reexamine? See, here's my point, here's what I'm trying to say. We need to be able to influence that, to, to, we need, we need to have reexamined the public school accountability systems on that level so that we will know what we want them to be able to, what we want to have changed. Because if we are not that specific in my mind, then it's not going to impact in a positive way how we educate our kids. So I, I'm just thinking that it's not specific enough and we haven't done the work that we need to do in terms of understanding what those public school accountability systems are so that we can affect them. We don't, we don't want to leave that in the hands of the state if we're coming up with this policy. That, that's my, that's my thought around this.
Thank you. Anything else on, um, resolution? All right, on 229, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose?
No.
Okay, want to know? Um, 218 through 236, um...
Mr. President?
With the exception of 229, Commissioner, um, White?
Can I, um, make a request that we extend the same courtesy to those that are waiting around on resolution 234?
Yes, and what does 234 relate to, Commissioner?
That's the SES.
SES, all right. So, uh, let's, let us, uh, deal with 234 separate and apart from 236 because I'm sure there may be some discussion around that. That's not one of the ones I said, no, okay.
No.
All right, 234, I entertain a motion to approve resolution 234. Moved by Commissioner Elliott, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Campos. Uh, Commissioner White, just came out of your, uh, was discussing your ESA committee. I'll start with you.
Yeah.
You just want to give us a background?
Sure, in, in the report, uh, that Ms. Morgan prepared, it indicated that this particular resolution came out of the committee, uh, without, uh, recommendation is the exact quote. Um, but that, of course, as you all know, doesn't mean a, a great deal that this board is charged with making a decision. I just want to share with you some of my, um, observations and concerns about, uh, resolution 234. Uh, first thing, I think it's important to point out the positive things. Uh, the fact that this is an attempt by the administration to standardize costs, uh, given the fact that across the state there were instances of, uh, clear excesses, um, not necessarily in Rochester, but I think this was, um, a cash cow for some and I think that the administration wisely wants to make sure that, uh, the taxpayer dollar is being spent prudently and effectively. So I, I congratulate the administration for, for attempting to do that with this particular resolution. Secondly, with 22 providers prior to this resolution, uh, offering over 57 pre and post assessments, um, it was difficult to measure the success of any particular provider. I mean, everybody had their own pre and post measures about success, so it was difficult to understand who was, as an SES provider, successful and who was not. And so, uh, the administration is calling for a consistent assessment measure. That's sound practice and I, 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 again, um, encourage folks to support the direction the administration has taken this regard. And finally, uh, I, I would say the administration is preaching to the choir when it tells us we have to have an integrated, coordinated approach, uh, along with those other two elements, standardized costs and a, a consistent assessment measure. These, this is a good direction that this administration has taken. However, uh, I do, and, and I think it's fair to say, others in this community, and you heard some of them talk tonight, um, have some deep concerns about resolution 234. You know, before I got here, I never heard the phrase "deep dive." I think it's a phrase that educators like to use. We need to do a deep dive and understand what is going on here. And I would say there's a difference between scuba diving and snorkeling. I don't, quite frankly and quite honestly, uh, think that the dive here was very deep. And, uh, if anybody, uh, wants to, I would encourage them to listen to the digital recording. We had two consecutive meetings or bifurcated hearings or meetings on this particular proposal, proposal. So, uh, the Excellent Student Achievement Committee did do with due diligence, did examine, uh, these proposals exhaustively. And what I mean by, this is an example of snorkeling rather than scuba diving, is that if you listen to the digital recording of the hearing, or the discussion on these particular proposals, uh, the administration had to concede that this was, in assessing which particular SES providers were successful and which were not, uh, they, for example, said, quote-unquote, "This is not a student-by-student assessment, rather it's a cohort-by-cohort assessment." So there was no understanding of whether a particular SES provider was successful or not because they maintain that sometimes these students went from inside, outside SES services to in, inside SES services. And let me just say, one of the biggest concerns I have is the administration started off with this assumption that everything should be in the school building. Um, and, and as you all know right now, SES services are scattered throughout the district and some providers have them in the schools and some have them outside the schools and some providers, uh, do both. And I asked the administration, I said, "What made you conclude, what data specifically made you conclude that the services ought to be offered inside and only inside school buildings?" And there really was no, uh, data to support that. They started off with the assumption that it was better to have these programs offered in the schools, without any data to support that. And again, I would encourage anybody to listen to the tapes that are available. When I asked them, for example, "What does the data tell you?", the data that they had, and I, this is an exact quote, "It doesn't tell me much." So we started off with this assumption that we're going to put all these programs in the schools without testing whether scientifically, data-wise, whether this was the right direction. I, I said to them, quite frankly, I think the administration started off with the notion that that's where we want these programs offered. We want to extend the day. So let's put these programs, these SES providers, force them all into the classroom. To not have tested that assumption, tested the assumption that the model putting of these programs in the schools was factually and statistically correct was a significant error and I think skewed the judgment of the administration as they assessed whether they should offer these services altogether. But that, perhaps that is why some of the poorest performers, uh, you had data, we had data from 2010, 2011, 2011, 2012. Some of the poorest performers were selected as the nine vendors that are going to be offered these services. You look at the data, some of the poorest performers end up being one of the nine selected vendors that are all required to offer their services now in the schools. Another example, one vendor was selected, was the nine vendor selected, I'll mention it, Encompass, they had no data, no data at all for 2010, 2011. That's how I, I suggest we ended up with a program, a resolution that suggests all these things ought to be, uh, in the schools. Another provider, Mercy Air, I think it was, only served four people, yet they were selected to be one of the nine finalists. And now here's the real ult, ultimate irony and the difficult thing for me to accept. There was a vendor who had applied, uh, the name of the vendor was Greater Rochester Martial Arts. This particular vendor had the best numbers for 2010, 2011, 2011, 2012, the best performance. When I say numbers, I'm talking about increasing their ones and their ones to twos, twos to threes. They were the best. They are not a provider under this plan. You will not see Greater Rochester Martial Arts as a provider, uh, for this particular resolution. Now, I had the, the email that, uh, the president and CEO, uh, had sent to the administration, uh, but essentially, trust me on this, oh, he said, "This is from, uh, Mr. Papo Verilaba." Probably mangled his name. It was sent August 7th, 2012. Now remember, 2010, 2011, 2011, 2012. name. "It was sent August 7, 2012." Now, remember, 2010, 2011, 2011, 2012, this proprietor had the best numbers. His kids went from twos to threes in numbers like any other. He exceeded everything that the nine vendors that they had selected. This is what he wrote. "Dear Mr. Smith, Gary Smith, although it has been a great pleasure working with the students and the city school district, the Greater Rochester Marks Incorporated regrets to inform you that we will not be submitting a proposal for the 2012, 2013 school year for the academic support for expanded learning. The requirements for providing services directly at the schools has not made it possible for us to put a financially viable proposal at this time. However, we would like to be considered in future RFPs for services to be provided outside the schools and at our facility." And putting in its most simple, humanistic form, who are we when we rank dead last in graduating black males? We rank seventh in the nation in child poverty, where our ELA and MAST scores are abysmal. Who are we to say to somebody who has a successful program, "No, we do not want your services because you are not offering them in the schools"? That is unacceptable as a district. We can't afford to take a vendor who has a proven track record for turning kids around by turning him away. There are additional concerns. Iglesia points out some of those concerns. Iglesia has offered its services inside the building and outside school buildings, and the data seems to suggest they performed quite well. When I asked the administration, "Did you look at the vendors who performed their services inside the building versus outside the building," to make an assessment about who performs better? Because we know that Diallo Teacher, they offer their services in the building. So, you would naturally think, since the administration has chosen this approach, that Diallo Teacher would have better numbers than vendors who operated outside the building. That's not the case. That's not to blame Diallo Teacher, but again, the assumption, the untested assumption was, we want these people in the building because they perform better. But if you look at the data, my fellow members of the board, you won't see that in 2010, and 11, and 2011, and 2012. I have an additional concern. The method, and I'm not a research person, but there were some things that really struck out to me. Like, for example, they started off with the assumption that we have to have these in the building without testing the data for it. Secondly, the survey was flawed because they didn't, there was a survey that they gave to parents and to administrators, principals, about whether they wanted, they asked them a number of questions, but the results of the survey were not weighted. So, a participant like Diallo Teacher or Iglesia, between the two of them, they had 50% of all of our students who went to SES. The parent or the principal that responded to the survey, who only had one child, and is, oh, four kids in the SES program, the results of that survey were weighted the same as the RCA or Diallo Teacher and Iglesia. To determine what our people wanted, they gave the same weight to a provider who had four kids, to a provider who had experience with 500 kids. You can't have a valid survey, you can't understand what your population wants if you don't actually understand what they're saying to you. The other thing that I noticed is, the administration did not look at, for example, Iglesia has more ones and twos than most providers. That wasn't looked at in terms of whether they were successful or not. If you have more ones and twos, trying to make their ways to ones and twos or to threes and fours, they're going to be a more challenging population. The administration conceded. It did not take that into account when determining whether a particular vendor was, quote unquote, "successful" or not. And finally, and I think most significantly, what we have to turn our attention to is this. During the course of, I think, a finance meeting, or a policy meeting, we'd had a conversation with the Human Capital Initiative's Director, and we got a crash course in conflicts.
Conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest. And one of the things that came out as a result of that conversation, and Bethany, I want to thank you for that orientation to that whole subject, it's not an easy one to figure out, was that, and I'm doing my best here, Bethany, if a vendor has an interest in the outcome, then there may be a conflict of interest. And I know that's very, a simplified version of what Bethany told us. And this is not to be taken as a factual statement, but as a lawyer, and when we look at conflict of interest, we look at even the appearance of impropriety. When we talked to the administration about these nine vendors, it became clear that it was inconsequential to them whether the students who needed SES services were being tutored by the very teachers that would now be providing SES services. Here's how conflict works. If, and no one is alleging at all that the teachers would purposely make students fail. That's not what conflict of interest is about, that's not what appearance of impropriety is about. It's about the potential, the perceived potential, that someone might do something so that they can get a contract, or that they can continue to get a contract. Under the current construction, if you're a student and you go to school number 25, you will get tutoring by the same teachers who may have, quote unquote, "failed you." Under the past configuration, that wasn't necessarily the case. You could be a student at 25 and get tutoring services from, let's say, Iglesia, who might in fact have even hired a teacher, but that teacher wouldn't have been from 25 school. This conflictive issue is a major issue which the administration has not addressed. So, two things. One, there are, and I hope Commissioner Adams will speak to this as well, because she participated in these meetings, there was a complete failure to provide data to suggest that this is the appropriate model and approach. I don't think it was intentional, but I think it's clear, when you, if you listen to those tapes, they don't have the data to support this seismic shift in how we approach this. They're now saying, "Everybody must be in the schools," and they did that without looking at whether a particular vendor was successful inside or outside. We're talking millions of dollars and hundreds of students. That's the first thing. Secondly, this bright line rule, this line in the sand that says, "From now on, everybody has to offer their services in the schools," who are we to turn away, in our circumstance, to turn away a program, a vendor, who is extremely successful in supporting the educational goals of kids, whether it's Iglesia or the Greater Rochester Martial Arts Association? We're not in a position to do that, to say no to somebody who says, "I think I can do a better job at supporting the educational mission of kids outside rather than inside." And then finally, the conflict of issue, it cannot be resolved in this manner. And you know what? It's kind of unfair, but you hear people say, they've been saying it for years, "How is it the teachers get paid to tutor kids who, in some instances, are failing?" Now, we're very complicated about this. We know that their failure is not related necessarily to teachers. But the perception is, the very people who are charged with getting those kids to go to twos to threes, to ones to twos, are now, in this particular approach, are going to be the very teachers who are going to be tutoring them. And that's where the conflict of interest issue arises. And this current proposal, it cannot get over that hump. Thank you, Mr. President.
Hold on one second. One order. I'm running a media. Mr. Lopez, one second. Are you, Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Lopez, is something he wants to say? Is that okay with you, your staff member?
I just want to remind the board members that the bylaws provide for a five-minute limit on discussion.
No, not yet.
They do, I just read them.
No, we haven't passed those bylaws. The five-minute rule is something we continue to debate in our policy committee, including this last policy.
Well, is that written out?
And that was Van's, wasn't that your policy?
Me at five minutes? Are you kidding?
That's right. And I know Van well, and nobody has a hard time, so do I. But I just wanted to remind you that that's in there. Was that yours?
Yeah, thank you.
Is it in there, the five-minute rule?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lopez. May I excuse myself for a minute?
Is that some discretion of the president?
At the discretion of the president.
But I think the next line says that discretion.
I forgot about it, that's what I think.
No, I think it says the discretion of the president. My discretion, hold on, I have to spend the five.
The discretion of the president to impose.
To impose. So, we're familiar with that, Mr. Lopez. I very rarely impose it, and I'm not going to this time.
Well, let me just say, I find it extremely interesting and unfortunate that after a subject like that, that issue would be raised. And I think it's very transparent why it was raised, and I think strategically, it was an inappropriate and unnecessary move. People have talked for 10, 15 minutes.
But he's new, Van.
Come on, now, we're not naive. It's not, be naive about this. And I think that, and as Ed says, I know him quite well, but I think that was really unnecessary, unprofessional, and in light of the fact that people have talked for quite some time, and it comes up just now, you could do better than that, Ed.
Yeah, but just let me say that, it goes on to say, discretion of the president, and I'm exercising my discretion not to, obviously, because this is a.
But he does have a right, it's parliamentary.
He does.
Parliamentary to bring that up.
Come on, all right.
But he's also.
He absolutely has that right.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, let me, you yield it, Commissioner White, so I have the floor now.
Yes, sir.
Let me just ask a question to, well, the superintendent just stepped out. But I was going to ask, who's the point person on SES? Ms. Murphy, you can come up. I've long had my own issues with SES in general. It relates to the No Child Left Behind program. It's problematic in many instances. Now, that doesn't mean that, these are people that are chosen as providers. We have the option of not using any money on any providers. Just recap for me, how it works. A student says they need the service, and then they get to pick the provider, or the provider's provided at the school? How is that going to?
So, it's totally different this year than it was last year. When the state applied to the federal government for the NCLB waiver, one part of that, one part of that waiver changed the ACS rules. So, previously to this, that set aside for student supplemental services was set aside for providers, and the district acted as a flow-through. So, basically, the child hired the provider that they wanted, or the person that they wanted to use. With the waiver, that now, that set aside, now is the district setting aside that money, or to do academic intervention services, which this district calls SAS. So, the district is not required to utilize or use any providers if it does not choose to. The district can do it the way that it chooses to do this. The set aside is now part of the district's plan for intervention services.
Right. So, there's no determination on how much each of these folks are going to get? It's based upon the services that they provide?
It is.
At the school?
Yes. So, the money is, and I just want to be clear, because I think there was a miscommunication on this. The money is divided by, on a per pupil expenditure.
Right.
To focus and priority schools. And so, the money that's divided can be spent in that school on a variety of services, providers, internal, external. This district chose to use an RFP process to choose those providers, but I could provide services to the exact same number of children, given this. It's about where those services happen, and how much those children get on a per pupil expenditure.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions on 234 or comments? Commissioner Elliott?
Yes. I guess I don't understand the real argument, and I understand, Commissioner White, you to be critical of that they're doing it in-house, and I don't understand why that's a criticism, in-house versus outside, if the same services, the same services, I'm imagining, Mr. Superintendent, can be offered. So, I don't understand the argument or the criticism, why it has to be done, why you're arguing it being done off-site versus on-site. Does that make a difference?
Will you yield for just a minute? Not five minutes, one minute? So, I can answer that question?
You yield, Commissioner Elliott?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, she yields, Commissioner White.
I use the karate guy as an example. He said.
Who's the karate guy?
Well, he owns an organization called the Greater Rochester Martial Arts Association, and he provided one hour of tutoring and one hour of karate. I think they call it a dojo. He has a place where he does that.
Called a dojo.
He feels, and it might be for liability considerations, might be a whole host of reasons why, he feels he can best offer those services outside the school building. That's what he feels. And you know what, Commissioner Elliott? He has the track record to prove it. He performed better than anybody else. But because the district issued an RFP that said, "You can only provide these SES services inside schools," he said no, and we lost the services of an excellent provider. Iglesia, for example, offers food, and they feed the kids, and they transport the kids. They feel, in some models, in some contexts, it is better to do it in the school, and that in others, they do it at the Dewey Avenue Center. They, as they indicated, one time, Counselor Vargas referred kids from Greece to the Dewey Avenue Iglesia Center. Regent Wade Norwood referred his child there, Mayor Duffy referred his child. So, there are some settings where these particular vendors feel that they are more successful there, and the data proves that. And people who select them prove that.
Well, I mean, I would probably argue about that data, because data can be construed the way in which you want it to be construed. The issue still for me is, is that, you know, I still don't get why it's best to do it internally, why people have an issue with that. Because it seems to me that they are, we are looking at passing this resolution. Now, if it's, and I don't know if it's going to get passed or not, but if people, you know, it's the district who is in the board, who are stewards of this money, and I would probably also argue that it has to do with cost as well, as to the reason perhaps that it's in-house. But I would not argue solely that these services be provided externally.
Oh, no, I wouldn't either.
I wouldn't argue that, you know.
Me neither.
But that, we're getting, our students are getting the services. Now, I don't know all of the, I haven't been here, but it seems to me that that is a pretty weak argument, that they would do it, that it be done in the school versus it be done in a certain external location. It just seems to me that that's a weak argument. But again, I don't know all of the details at this point, so.
All right, I'm going to go to Commissioner Adams, and then Commissioner Camps, then I got to take like a two-minute bathroom break, because I don't want to miss any of this conversation. If I have to step out and let somebody else take over, I need to be here for the entire conversation. So, I haven't moved since six o'clock. When we had the charter school hearing.
Do I come first?
Commissioner, Bohan tells me I'm young enough. No, I can't handle it.
You can.
I'll do it in one second. Do a recess in one second. Commissioner Adams?
So, are you applying a lot of pressure for me to be super concise?
Yeah, so I won't.
Why don't you yield and let him take his bearings right now?
All right, I'll make an effort to be super concise. So, I, as a member of the Excellence and Student Achievement Committee, I participated in two lengthy meetings reviewing this resolution and background regarding it. I come at the assessment of it and my conclusions from a little bit different angle than Commissioner White does, but I do share a lot of his concerns and reservations. I did vote to advance the resolution to the full board with reservation, because I do think it's important that our students have access to tutoring services. And I'll get to the rationale why I think that we're in jeopardy of not providing services that our students need if we are to hold up this resolution. So, one of my first, why I took this issue particularly seriously is because I understand it to be an important central component to the superintendent's vision for reforming the entire district. In other words, every, all of our eggs seem to be in the basket of extended time and extended learning. And when people ask, "How are we going to pay for extended time and extended learning?" SES funds, Title I funds, are an important component of that funding stream. There are certainly other components as well. So, it is very, and one of my underlying concerns and continued concerns is looking for specificity of what will make a better school day, not just a longer school day, and getting beyond the acknowledgement that we have to do that, because the superintendent and staff are acknowledging that we need a better school day, not just a longer school day, but what are the specifics? And that, again, that echoes Commissioner White's call for specific, immediate, urgent plans and programs that are spelled out, and not citing bullet points of what the research shows are the approaches. We need really concrete plans. So, it's in that context that I'm approaching evaluation of SES provision. So, when I ask, so the question is, if we're moving towards school-based, extended-day learning. learning as the emphasis of everything right now, then why would we even use any external providers? That's the question, you know, following the logic of what's being presented. Why would we, now that we have the option of going solely to school-based, staff-developed, central, you know, plans, why would we use any external providers? So, and the answer was that some of the existing providers that have been doing this for years have unique offerings, even though the emphasis now is all on academics and not necessarily, and not any longer on particular community-based or particular educational approaches, broader-type contributions to how children learn. We were told that it's very focused on academics. So, that's, that was a little bit contradictory. When I asked about capacity, do we have the capacity right now to do entirely in-house provision of supplemental tutoring? I believe the answer was that yes, we have the capacity, but we are not gonna go forward with that right now because of these special things. And examples were given of software products, proprietary products that some of the SES providers own. Those kinds of examples were cited as what external providers would bring into our schools. Now, on further investigation, I'm really, really concerned that we don't have capacity to do even the half-share right now that is being identified as being done centrally, is in-house from within particular school communities. Why do I say that? Number one, when I asked, is that money freely accessible right now? Could schools be implementing tutoring programs, supplemental services within their schools? The answer is yes. How many are? None. So, even though that money has been available and schools could be implementing, they're not yet. So, what, you know, there's some reason for slow uptake, and so, that's a fact, that even though this capacity has been said to exist, it hasn't been. I see you wanna say something, but let me, let me continue on. The other basis for my concern about lack of capacity for schools to do this on their own is my observations. You know, I visit my liaison schools, I talk to people, I research, I reach out to get as much information as I possibly can from as many sources. My impression, and certainly there are schools that exist, that are stable enough, strong enough, in place enough to be doing strategic, comprehensive planning of how best to use this money, but there are many schools who are not. There are many schools right now who are struggling with basic staffing. There are many schools right now who are struggling trying to get their hands on common core materials. There are many schools right now who are struggling with teachers who are freaked out about APPR. Everybody here knows that. Everybody's heard stories, not just stories, but the realities that our teachers are going through right now. So, there's not the capacity right now for our schools to make the most strategic, comprehensive, and best use of these resources, which are in fact central to our whole district's plan for reforming. So, I'm very concerned about that. I'm concerned about the capacity. So, that leads me to the conclusion that despite the lack of evidence that the board, that ESA was given in terms of comparative effectiveness of different tutoring programs, my conclusion is that we do need to enter into agreements with third-party vendors, because we need to be able to have access to these supportive services for our students. So, I just wanna kinda go through that, that logic and the concerns, the reservations, the realities. None of these realities are good, but that's the real, and Commissioner...
He's gotta go to the bathroom, girl.
I'm sorry. So, I have some specific, I have some specific requests for the superintendent and for the administration. Can I read them?
Take your bath.
Let's take a two-minute break.
And then you can get...
We'll come back with Mary's reading of some recommendations, and let's take a three-minute recess.
I think that you want to...
I just think it's important.
Even if I, I'm still sitting down, you need a ride, I'm there. What's her name? I'm so awful.
Well, that's part, that's part, that's part of my, that's part of, no, no, that's part of my, as I mentioned before, that's part of my spiritual growth.
All right, we will reconvene.
I've got more experience now, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You'll have what? You can't vote. Okay.
All right, so we are, we are reconvene. I'm sorry for the interruption. Commissioner, I feel like my nephew. I mean, I feel like my son. I won't tell you what he tells me. Daddy, I gotta... Commissioner Adams, you were getting ready, and I will rewind, you were getting ready to say, may I read the recommendations? And I would say, yes, so go ahead.
All right, I'm gonna, may I request to enter these as an amendment? Approve an amendment?
You can, you can choose to amend any resolution that's on the table. If you wanna make a motion for an amendment, you can, and then state what the amendment is. If the amendment gets a second, we will then discuss your amendment.
Okay, motion to amend?
Okay, if you just wanna say what your amendment is, and then we'll get a second.
There's extensive verbiage here.
Did you send out the verbiage?
Yeah.
Do we have the verbiage? Okay.
But you know what? Let me just say, we just got this verbiage tonight, and is this what we're talking about? And I'm uncomfortable, I'll just vote no, 'cause I'm uncomfortable to the amendment, that is. Can I vote to run the amendment, or is that a conflict of interest for me?
Still part of the conflict.
Okay, all right.
But you can talk about the amendment for discussion purposes. That doesn't mean the amendment has to pass, but for discussion purposes...
Yeah, I guess I have, I have a...
Point of order.
Yeah, point of order.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a problem that we have this, these amendments just tonight, and it's quite verbose, and then to be able to make an intelligent decision about the amendment to support the resolution, I just think that it's unfair to your colleagues to have these amendments tonight. And, you know, I, really, I didn't know what, and then to try to read it while we're doing it.
Commissioner Adams, I know, Commissioner Adams, that was a concern of hers. Go ahead, Commissioner Adams.
So, does that mean there's no, no motion to...
No, you still can make a motion.
I would like to make a motion to do it, because I'd like to discuss this in any case, and in case the board feels that these are useful, then I'm thinking that it avoids repetition.
Is this just a way we can follow along with the writing, in writing? Is there a, is there a...
I was just gonna read it. It was handed out.
She, Commissioner, Commissioner Adams provided a sheet with a list of amendments to the resolution. So, basically, parliamentary procedure, she can make a motion for an amendment, all she needs is a second for the purposes of discussion, and you wanna just read your amendment, and then if you get a second, then we can continue on with discussion. So, Commissioner Adams, you still have the floor.
So, may I read this?
Yes, you may.
The whole thing?
Not the, the bottom part.
Okay.
And I won't read it in all the formal language. I'm requesting that the administration will submit concomitant with each agreement and evaluation plan to include pupil level... So, this, this refers to the resolution, which is resolving to enter into contracts with nine external providers for SAS services. So, I'm asking that the superintendent will submit concomitant with each agreement and evaluation plan to include pupil-level assessments of adherence to individualized academic plans and student and family satisfaction with academic supports, in addition to demographic and academic data that the district will keep and make available for meaningful evaluations.
Excuse me, I'm going to tell you, I'm asking you please read, do not...
She read.
It's really very difficult to find out what is being voted on. If you don't just read the amendment...
She was, she's gonna, she's gonna get to that, Mr. Lopez.
Well, she's reading it, but...
Yeah, so just read the amendment.
I mean, she will, she will get to, she will get to reading the amendment, but she still has the floor, so she can say whatever she wants, and then when she gets to it, I'll ask her to read the resolve section.
She's not reading yet.
But she's not reading, reading it yet. She'll get to that. Right now, she's still, she's still...
I'll, I'll read.
Well, you have, you can say whatever you want. If you wanna sing a song for 10 or 15 minutes, you can do that.
Five minutes, five minutes.
And then get to the resolve part, you can do that. So, I know that everyone's in a hurry to go, but as chair, I'm not gonna exercise the five-minute rule tonight. There's times when we're here till midnight. Superintendent report took 45 minutes, so we're not, we're not in a hurry to get out of here. The board reports took longer. Commissioner White spoke for a while. So, Commissioner Adams, you have the floor. If you wanna make a statement and then read the resolve clauses with your amendment, that's fine. I'll ask for a second for it, then we'll have discussions on the amendment. You have the floor, Commissioner.
I really appreciate it. I will continue with direct reading. Resolve that the superintendent or his designee will develop and disseminate to all schools and programs eligible for SAS a clear set of guidelines and expectations, along with a compendium of potential extended learning configurations that incorporate both third-party and school-based Title I-A-funded academic supports. School and program leaders will have access to clear information regarding the superintendent's vision of effective extended learning approaches, pedagogy, and content, as well as constraints of Title I-A grant stipulations no later than October 15, 2012. Resolve that the superintendent and his designees will devote specific and focused attention to the disproportionate educational crisis affecting African-American and Latino males in the development of extended learning programs. The SAS providers approved herein will be accurately described in SAS guidelines for schools according to each organization's evidence-based offerings and strengths associated with success in educating African-American and Latino boys. Resolve that, given the slow uptake of direct staff provision of school-based Title I-A extended learning programming, the superintendent or his designee will reopen the process for potential SAS providers to submit applications with an emphasis on evidence-based offerings and strengths associated with success in educating African-American and Latino boys. Any future agreements with additional SAS providers would require a separate board resolution and would not displace or replace, I'm sorry, displace those SAS providers provided herein.
Thank you. You've heard the amendment. Is there a second to the amendment read by Commissioner Adams as it relates to Resolution 234? For the purposes of discussion, is there a second?
There's a second.
Seconded by Commissioner Campbell's, discussion now is on the language around the amendment. So, we are discussing, we are discussing the four resolve clauses that were submitted by Commissioner Adams. Discussion on the amended resolution provided by, amended language to the resolution of 234 provided by Commissioner Adams. Discussion, Commissioner Powell.
It's quite remarkable in terms of getting to the point of evidence-based work, and I have to commend Commissioner Adams for, for that. I mean, it spells out exactly how you get to decisive, evidence-based outcomes and reports. But I have to say, and I'm sorry to say this, Mary, 'cause you put a lot of work into this, clearly, I don't think it gets to a core problem, and that is a business problem, not academic, not, not goals for this, for the extended-day program, but the business model itself. The RFP went out and basically said, if you're providing it off-site, you need not apply. Now, so that narrowed the field considerably, including, and I wasn't at the ESA meeting, but including ostensibly programs that were highly successful. It does include dial-a-teacher, and there was a presumption, I think, that, that the way that dial-a-teacher is currently delivered could change. Right now, dial-a-teacher, a teacher literally is at a phone bank, and students dial in, and the concept for extended day is that the, those kids would get more face time with teachers. Well, you know, here's a, here's a prime case where I wish that the school district would use the military model of decision-making. If all the staff members had been in the room, and if Dr. Centrone had been in the room, she could have told us, changing the way dial-a-teacher works would be a conflict of interest, at least a perceived conflict of interest, and if the policies that language is changed, as was presented to the policy committee, went through, then dial-a-teacher would fall right off this list of providers. They would not be able to do it, because not only would it be the appearance... They would not be able to do it, because not only would it be the appearance of conflict of interest, but it would be an absolute violation of our board policy if we passed that policy language change. All right, let's say we carve out an exception for dial-a-teacher, and we say, you can continue to sit at your phone. Well, where does that stop? We're gonna make one exception and only one exception. These other providers either submitted or didn't submit based on an RFP that said, if you are not physically in our buildings, you need not apply. So the business model that was presented is flawed and needs to go back to the drawing board. We should not be deciding this based on the where. And I don't care how badly we want extended day. Devoting 100% of this Title I dollars to onsite extended day can't work with dial-a-teacher. You cannot have a teacher from the same building sitting in extended day to provide services. Now, let's say, okay, don't sit at the phone bank, go to another school. You can still be in a school, we'll just send you to a different school than the one you teach at, and therefore resolve the conflict of interest. Well, that does not address the goal, the stated goal, of developing that relationship between the teacher and the student. So yes, again, you haven't solved the problem. We have a business problem in front of us. And Mary, I want to say it one more time. This is extraordinary effort to get at the real mechanisms that we can measure outcomes. And the administration should have been doing this all along, and shouldn't have to have been told by directive in a resolution how to do it. And I would vote yes for your amendment on this basis, but I'm still gonna vote no on the resolution, because the RFP process was flawed. And I don't see how, even with these changes, how we can get where we need to go, unless we carve out dollars specifically as exceptions to this in-the-school building rule.
Yeah, hold on, yeah, one second, because I just want to keep order here. Right now, the conversation needs to be limited to the amendment. And then we need to have closure on the amendment that is on the floor as it relates to the resolution. Then we can get back to the broader piece of the resolution. So if people have comments related to 1, 2, 3, 4 resolved clauses on the amendment that Mary Adams presented, speak to that. If it's not related to the 1, 2, 3, 4 resolved clauses of the amendment that Commissioner Adams has on the floor, I'm gonna have to cut you off, and then just keep it to the resolved clauses. So we need to deal with the amendment, whether or not we're gonna vote yes or no for it, and then we can get back to the original resolution. So comments on Commissioner Adams's resolved clause. Mr. Superintendent, you want to...
Would you please allow Ms. Murphit to provide some clarification?
Just two points of clarification. The dial-a-teacher proposal is not for phone services, it's for actual tutorial services, and not necessarily teachers in a child's school. So there are two parts to dial-a-teacher. One is a bank of phone services, the other is a tutorial service.
All right, again, I'm sorry. Point of order. Can we just, we're talking about the whole resolution, but the four, I just want to dispense with Commissioner Adams's proposal on the amendment to the resolution with the four resolves. And then if people are gonna vote yes for it, no for it, then we can go back to the original resolution, or whatever we're gonna do there. Because if it becomes part of the amendment, then we can then start, if the amendment becomes part of the resolution that's on the table, then we can discuss the whole totality of resolution, including the other 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, whereas is the resolved clause. So again, if we can limit our conversation to the four resolved clauses of Commissioner Adams's resolution. Commissioner White.
Very briefly, in addition to what Commissioner Powell said, and Mary and I have talked at length about this whole subject at committee meetings and offline, in addition to Commissioner Powell's concerns, I would indicate that the resolution, and again, Mary and I have talked about this, the resolution, the amendment that she's presented, doesn't address the issue of, there's no resolve that says these particular nine vendors and additional vendors don't have to be in the schools. It doesn't get to that issue. Your amendment does not get to that particular issue. It doesn't say, it says that additional vendors may come in, but it doesn't, those four resolves, if I'm reading it correctly, does not address one of my concerns, which is vendors who are successful outside the context of the system. I don't understand sign language, Mary. Vendors who are successful with offering SES services outside the school are still, under your proposed amendment, would not be allowed to offer services. So we use them as an example, the Greater Rochester Karate Association guy, he would not be allowed to provide services, even under this amendment. Karen Iglesias, who's offered services outside the district in some successful fashion to other people. Once again, the superintendent, as a counselor, referred people to the Dewey Avenue Center. Those students would not have access to that, in Greece or in the city. That is, that's the problem with the, as Commissioner Powell said, you did a great job articulating what is really required for this kind of tutor, and to make it better, in addition to the comments that I said at the very top, which is that the district has said, we've gotta have standardized measures, we've gotta standardize costs, we've gotta have an integrated approach. But on top of it, I think, and I'm talking about this, there has to be the right to choose among vendors who are good. And we have good vendors who cannot be chosen now under the system.
Commissioner Campos, on the amended resolution?
Not on the amendment.
Not on the amendment, okay. Anything else on the amendment? Commissioner Adams can either choose to withdraw the amendment, or we can move to a vote on the amendment. It's up to you, Commissioner Adams.
I will withdraw, because it doesn't look like there's...
All right, the amendment is withdrawn. Now we'll move back to conversation around Resolution Number 234. Commissioner Campos.
Okay. I just would like to hear from the superintendent or one of his staff, what's the vision for SES by being able to provide it onsite?
Mr. Superintendent?
And if they've been in the ESA.
Let me...
Mr. Superintendent?
That's a great question.
Yourself, and you want Ms. Murphy to come up to the microphone?
I will, but let me just say clearly, you are taking the direction, if you don't support this resolution, your action is saying that extended learning is in jeopardy. Because the only way that this can be done, and part of the equation which I presented to you, because I know you were going to be dealing with this topic, takes into account utilizing the freedom that we now have through the waiver to provide our student with a different model, one which allow us to give them more support during the school day. Whatever you want to add.
Nope, I don't have anything to add.
Okay.
So help me understand. So by saying that hypothetically speaking, we're now, well, it's actually real, we're now not offering people that are not on the premises an opportunity for this? And so you're essentially saying extended learning would be dead if we didn't offer that? So what I'm asking is, why onsite?
The research supports that the time that children spend in school with people who have access to teachers in school and to the academic program in school do better than children who do not have that same access. Now...
Is the research between onsite and off-site services, or is it just focusing in on onsite?
Well, the research is on both, yes. It's on both.
Okay.
I'm happy to provide that research, too, by the way.
Yeah, no, that would be helpful after the fact. And then my other, so then my second question would be, so what happens in terms of transportation? You know, after school, so they're done with their tutoring services, then what happens? How do they get home?
This is a part of the expanded day that we're gonna have to try to, you know, make work with what we have. So if it's late bus runs, or if it's expanding the day for the entire school, then it's changing bus runs. We don't know what that's gonna look like yet, because buildings, to Commissioner Adams's point, buildings have been waiting to see if this resolution is going to pass or not pass to decide what they're gonna do with that money. So I think it's gonna be a case-by-case basis where we make those decisions, how children get home.
Because, I mean, my other question would be, how much more is the district gonna, what costs are we gonna incur by having a separate round of transportation?
We won't know that until we know how people do, pick providers versus in-house.
Let me...
Not in-house.
Let me just remind the board that in Buffalo, New York, to the west of us, they did away with all the provider. Let me just remind the board that Buffalo did away with all the provider. And let me just remind the board that I had to make the case to some of my colleagues in the state of New York nationally, why I was given the freedom to provide better service to K, and I chose this model. So I do know that, and I could take any attack, because now my colleagues think that, and this board, by the way, if you had the prerogative, which I said to the president, that is your choice. But I just want to make people aware that some even our own provider, that provides service to the east of us or to the west of us, or the district that I do even better than Rochester, chose not to use the model that was an assistant.
And simply what I'm trying to understand is exactly why you chose this model. Because without that understanding, it would be unfair for us to make that type of decision. So I'm really trying to understand that, so that I can support it. So that's simply all I'm doing. I'm not trying to poke holes or anything along those lines. I'm trying to collaboratively understand where you're coming from.
Where I'm coming from is the extended day, which I have said repeatedly, that the waiver is part of it.
But you, there, you mentioned the president...
Sorry, Commissioner Elliott, I hold that thought for one second. Commissioner White had his hand up, then I'll go to Commissioner Elliott. Commissioner White and Commissioner Elliott.
A couple of things. You know, this board, long before the superintendent got here, has heard sort of, I call it the doomsday scenario. If we don't, I mean, how many times, with all due respect, has this board, before the superintendent got here, heard, if we don't do it, there's a doomsday scenario? How many times have we made decisions like that? And how many times do we think we've paid the price for that, in terms of long-range planning? We've heard that before. And the reality is, and Commissioner Campos, we asked those questions, because like you, we wanted to know what the rational basis was for this selection. That is, the initial decision that everybody had to be in the schools. I wanted to understand it. And it was clear, there was no data that they turned to to support that. Now, Anita, you indicate that the research supports that extended day, no one disagrees with that, or more exposure to learning. The question is, before us, where does that learning to take place? And when we asked them, and again, I challenge anybody to listen to the audio tapes, Jackie Morgan can make them available, we asked that question like you did, Commissioner Campos, trying to figure out why? What was the rationale to say everything had to be in the schools? And what we heard is what we heard today. We like extended day, but did you test that against, not national research, but dial-a-teacher? As you said, it's not just phone calling, it's actual teachers in the building. And by the way, none of this addresses the conflict. Mr. Lopez, you know, you're talking about protecting the district. We need to talk about the conflict here that doesn't even address all these issues of pedagogy. But the research locally was this, and again, I quote, I asked her, what does the data tell you? And I quote, Anita, she said, it doesn't tell me much. That's our local data. And when I asked her, like you did, I said, well, we have an example of an in-school provider, they only provide in-school, and that was dial-a-teacher. Was their data any better than somebody who offered it off-site? Absolutely not. And dial-a-teacher, by the way, wasn't on the top of the ladder in terms of performance. So we were asking the same question of Commissioner Campos, why? And finally, Dr. Vargas, you talk about, and I think correctly so, the freedom to choose. Because of this legislation, we were given the freedom to choose. And that's a good concept to run with. But if we are entitled to the benefit of the freedom to choose, and there are good providers out there that offer services onsite and off-site, and there's data to support that, why wouldn't we give our parents the freedom to choose? Yes, monitor them, yes, put a common measure, standardize costs, all that stuff, integrate it as best you can, but why wouldn't we give our parents the freedom to choose the karate guy?
Commissioner Elliott.
I'll pass.
Okay. Commissioner Powell.
I wanted to catch Anita while she was at the microphone. My question is, clearly, I need to understand more about this, the function of the dial-a-teacher portion that's in the schools. Specifically, if it's already in the schools, do our teachers stay in the school that they teach?
Up until the conflict of interest policy, I think the changes to the potential conflict of interest policy, they could have, because remember, the schools weren't making a choice, right? It was the parents that were making the choice. This was, up until this year, it was flow-through money from the district to the parent's choice directly. It has changed now because of the district's responsibility now to decide that and put programs into place.
So you're saying, when the parent chooses dial-a-teacher delivered at the school, that child stays at their school, the teacher stays at that school?
I'm saying that the parent, it's not parent choice now, it would be the school's choice as to what mechanism they want to use. The schools are given a per allocation to spend either on outside providers or on inside tutorial. So it isn't like a teacher could influence that choice, it's the choice of the principal and the site-based planning team as to what mechanism they want to use. So I couldn't say, stay here, I'm gonna tutor you after school, for example, and get paid to tutor you after school, because I said that, right? Because now it's the prerogative of the principal.
But that does not take away the conflict issue. All that does is, puts the principal, or the school-based planning team at fault, if you will, for putting the teacher in a position where they're teaching the child or failing to teach a child, and then teaching them again after hours, which is exactly the situation we have to work to avoid. It's simply because the teacher doesn't get that choice, what the principal or the school-based planning team does, does not resolve the conflict.
I wouldn't stand here and talk to you about conflict of interest policy, I'm not an attorney. But I think, you know, those are the things with the changes in the legislation that have to be worked out and worked through, so that we're not violating district policy.
Again, just to clarify again, this resolution is in no way allocating any funds to any of these people.
It is not allocating any funds to any provider or to any program.
So this resolution could be passed, saying that if these individuals meet the criteria that the superintendent is laying out in terms of being able to make sure a particular school meets the academic mission of the district of the state, then you could enter into to use these individuals?
That is correct.
But it could be very possible that this resolution could be passed, and we won't use any of these providers this year?
That could be true. I don't believe that is the case.
I don't believe that will be the case, but it could be conceivable.
It is conceivable that if we had capacity to do what we're talking about, that actually could be the case. I do not believe that that will be the case. I think some of our buildings have very good relationships with some of the providers, and people offering services that are good for children certainly, I think, will have opportunities.
The other thing I would, I would only add on the resolution is that I think, while I have my philosophical problems with SES in general, in relation to the whole No Child Left Behind Act, which is a disaster, it is important, I think, that being at the school year has started, and we know that we do have a 9% graduation rate among black males and a 5% college readiness rate, it's important that our kids get some type of services. I think what I'm hearing from the colleagues is the way in which the services are rolled out and how that happens. So although this is a long discussion, I think that it's an important one. Anyone else on Resolution 234 that's currently on the table for you? Commissioner Campos.
I'm just curious if there are any, I'm sorry, Anita, just based on the transportation, do you have a range, and where is it coming from in the budget, you know, these additional transportation costs?
Depends on the school. Some of the schools already provide transportation for expanded day, extended day-type activities, so it's really gonna depend on the school. If it's, we're talking about high school kids, then there's no additional cost, because they use their bus pass. If we're talking about a school that already has an expanded day, then there's no additional cost. If it were not, then we're gonna have to work through how that looks, I think.
Okay. President.
Commissioner Powell.
I don't know, I can't see into the future even one minute, so I don't know how this resolution's going to go. But responding to the, kind of the doomsday scenario, if this board says no, it's not saying no to extended day. It's not saying no to limiting the number of SES providers. My vote continues to be no, because it fails to address the fact that the RFP stipulated in the buildings. It should not have been part of the calculation in order to have full access to the best providers. The issue of transportation, you know, one of the virtues of off-site, when they, when they go to their, a provider of their own choice, the family is figuring out the transportation problem. This is a pure case of mission creep, now it's our problem.
Mr. President.
Yeah, one second, Commissioner White, if you don't mind, if I just ask one quick question. Can, I noticed the proposal of providers, could, could the administration, has the administration ever conceivably thought about having both or offering both, or is that, or is that?
That was not part of the RFP. It was not part of the RFP.
Not part of the RFP.
You mean, both onsite and off-site?
Onsite and off-site.
It was not part of the RFP.
Is that ever something that could be added, that onsite or off-site could be, would that be, would that be a calamity or disastrous, or not something that you think is feasible?
I, I think the way that the RFP was structured was purposeful for expanded day based on what the research says about children being in their own.
In their own building. And that's the whole, and that was the idea of it. I understand that. Commissioner White.
Yeah, I was at those meetings, again, two meetings, they must have lasted at least an hour and a half, two hours, maybe longer each. And we listened to the staff about where these teachers were going to be. And it was clear that the teachers were going to be where the students were. They weren't going to be, the teachers weren't going to be reassigned for tutoring, they were going to stay in their buildings. And this is Commissioner Powell's concern, and this is the issue about conflict of interest. There was nothing, again, I sat through two meetings, there was nothing that was presented that suggested that these teachers were going to be moved around to address the conflict of interest issue. You know, this is where I think Commissioner Powell's idea of going back to the drawing board, and Commissioner Adams' ideas that are, as Commissioner Powell said, are artfully and, and clearly stated about what we should be looking for, including the conversation about black males. I think this is where these two ideas converge, that, as Commissioner Powell says, we're not saying, "Let's not extend the day." We're not saying, "Let's not give kids more time in their seats," because, again, you use a glacy in the karate guy, but there are a lot of good providers out there. They provide extended time within the seats at school and within the seats at elsewhere. And again, we have plenty of examples of people who've opted for these services off-site. And again, I, I think it's worth repeating, our superintendent, when he was counselor, he said, "I think the Dewey Avenue site is a place for these kids to be." So why wouldn't, why, without the data, again, she said, "The data doesn't tell me much." So all we're left with is these anecdotal stories. And his experience was, a glacy on Dewey Avenue worked. The anecdotal story about the karate guy is, it worked better than any of these other providers. And we're saying, "No?" That, to me, just cannot justify the original assumption that said, going forward, when we put out this RFP, it's going to insist that everybody be in the schools. And then Commissioner Powell raised this point about, and I did as well, this doomsday scenario. These kids are, let's be honest about this, these kids are not going to be without services. First of all, there are teachers with these kids. Are we saying that these teachers are not, and this is the beginning of the school year? They're, they're making assessments, they're figuring out where these kids are. Are we genuinely saying we don't expect these teachers to do their job and provide for these kids and love them and help them learn while we figure out what we should do next? Is that what we're saying? Is that the doomsday scenario we're talking about? And not to mention, because I sat in these meetings ad nauseam, we talked about the dollars. This is $4.6 million worth of money we're talking about. The money for the SES providers is $1.9 million. The balance of it, we're not even discussing here today, folks, it's already been given to the schools. It's about $3 million, and it's already been given to the schools. So there's no scenario in which these kids are going to be without services, that the schools are already supposedly, hopefully, using this money. So I would caution my colleagues, we've been down this road before, and it's not been with the superintendent, where they sit here and they tell us, "Oh, my God, if we don't do this, it's, the, the sky's going to fall." It's not going to fall, because, one, we have competent, caring teachers, and, two, there's about $3 million that's supposed to help these kids learn. And, and it's the beginning of the school year.
Right. Dr. Stroh, I take it that you're up to, to talk about the conflict.
No, I, I did want to just address the conflicts of interest policy a little bit, because I think that, to make it clear, the current conflicts of interest policy would not prohibit a teacher from being in a school building and then providing tutoring services to a student that is in that same building. So when presentations were given, as far as how these in-school services would be provided, the, the providers wouldn't, didn't have the benefit of knowing that there was a possible conflict of interest change. And I don't believe that, from what I know about the proposals, that any of the providers would be, would be precluded from providing services if we changed the conflicts of interest policy. They would just have to tell the people that they were, that there was a teacher working for any of the providers, that they would have to go to a different school and provide those services, so.
Yeah. I agree, I agree that that is what you presented, that in that scenario, where a student, Johnny, needs the services of a math teacher, Mrs. Jones, and, and Mrs. Jones can't be that child's tutor, that the concept that we would move teachers to a different building versus moving the students, it simply runs counter to the intention of the extended day program, where both the student and the teachers get to stay put. And you're right, the current language does not prohibit it, but ordinary common sense tells you that the public would have, would outcry to, to learn that a Dial-A-Teacher teacher be standing in front of their child in the afternoon, the same child that was supposed to teach them in the morning. That's exactly the scenario that gives, you know, that, that communicates corruption. And I'm not, and, and none of us want to walk into that scenario when we know full well that, that SES services in the generic are viewed with suspicion in the public now, and rightfully so.
Thank you. Let me get to Commissioner Elliott, just because she, she had her hand up. Now I'll go to Commissioner Cruz.
This, this question, Mr. President, is to the superintendent. What happens if this resolution does not get passed? What happens to the funding? What happens to that work that these providers do for us? So what will, what will, what will be the?
Anita, will you?
What will be the issues if it didn't pass?
So I think if the resolution does not pass, then it would revert to the district using the money for tutorial services. We clearly have to parse this to buildings, we clearly have to provide tutoring services for children, and what I think it would do is make the district then responsible for all $4.6 million worth of tutoring services.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
You know, I, I think, given the amount of confusion that we have over this, you know, the unfortunate part of it is that committee meetings are supposed to work to sort of, you know, filter this out and vet this all out, right? And after almost three hours plus of dialogue committees, it still wasn't resolved. We're now having the third committee meeting with regard to reviewing the same information. Seems that some of the same kinds of questions are coming across, there's some doubt in terms of how this was all established. And, you know, there's, there's really no blame, other than, than I think some of this stuff could have been taken care of ahead of time. The implications here are enormous, in terms of $5 million, plus we've got some good providers out there. So I think, based on the conversation, I'm going to motion to table this until next week. I would suggest very, very strongly that if anybody has any concerns, that you speak to the superintendent or send him information to try and deal with some of these questions and some of these concerns ahead of time, before we get another opportunity to vote on this, so that we don't have this confusion.
All right, there's a, there's a motion on the floor, motion to table, go straight to a vote, there is no discussion, on a motion to table, go straight to a vote, is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. All those in favor of tabling Resolution Number 234, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can, can those of us who have a conflict vote on that resolution?
You can vote to table.
So it's Table 234. Okay.
So, but, but let's talk about, when, when are we going to meet to?
So after, this is, so the, what I would recommend is, after this meeting, what I would recommend is that, that we, we're going to have to schedule a special board meeting.
We already have one scheduled for the floor next Thursday.
So we have a special board meeting scheduled for October 4th, and then in the interim, we can discuss any of the concerns, and we can discuss in the interim also whether or not this board, and the administration, well, really this board, because it sits with the board, whether or not we think that we should use outside providers at all. We, we heard that there is $4.5 million, and of that $4.5 million, only 1.974 is slated for outside providers. So if we don't use it, that means that the money would go to us in the district.
I got principal right now talking about sense of urgency, that I'm asking for this money, they were waiting. I think it was Commissioner Adams who mentioned that, that they were, people didn't know what to do. I just met with the principal on Monday, they, I'm a fool person, because they all tell me that they have a sense of urgency here. I, I guess that's what you heard, Anita, right? And some of them, as, as some of you have said, I waited to engage some of this provider.
And just, and just a quick point of order, because we did table this, we really shouldn't, we got to stop talking about it, because we tabled it, so. So that's all I wanted to say about that. I feel like Forrest Gump, that's all I wanted to say, that's all I had to say about that. On to the next order of business, we'll get to 218 through 236, with the exception of 231, which we're going to discuss in executive session. The rest of these have, a lot, mostly have gone through Finance Committee, moved to 218 through 236, with the exception of 231. Seconded by Commissioner White, moved by Commissioner Cruz. Questions or comments around 218 through 236?
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Elliott.
Resolution 218, what's been the outcomes of our relationship with the University of Rochester, providing these, these services?
Point person on that?
Yeah, I am. I think it's.
218. Is that, is that Gladys's shop?
No, this is, oh, no, this is the.
Resolved, this is the Development to Disabilities?
Right. This is, uh. The person is Beverly.
Before I came to the district, I was kind of working with the group.
This is an opportunity to give the students who have disabilities work experiences within the hospital to help them identify career opportunities. We traditionally have provided for the general ads, this was a new program that just came about last year.
Okay, so we don't have any data in terms of the outcomes at this point?
No, we do not. This is just continuation of what was just started last year.
All right, thank you. And then Resolution 222, this is a, we meant to enter with case nets. And my question is, because I always thought we had a very weak accountability department, could not provide us with data that we needed, the interpretation of the data that we needed. So my concern here is, how are we going to use this data if we enter into an agreement with this organization?
So the goal is to stop using providers after this year that we don't need to use, because we need to bring that work in-house. So we're developing a solution by which we take the item analysis data and drop it into the data warehouse at the district, built, is very, is a very nice tool, by the way, so that we don't have to use these providers. It's a capacity-building year for us in accountability and IT, and we will restructure the way that business is done.
All right, thank you. Now, can I ask questions on 227?
Yes, you can.
229. 227, and I guess it also goes to 220, well, let me just do 227 with regard to, and goes to 228. I get, question is, why School 5 and can School, and you all have been out, what came to mind is about School 16 and all of the issues that we had around School 16 and could, is that going to be a part of the, the modernization project? So I thought about School 16, and particularly if we're trying to reconfigure these schools so that, you know, they meet the needs of our junior high and our high school students, is School 16, and I probably should know this, but I don't, is School 16 going to be a part of this, of this mesh in order to have it be reconfigured, or?
No, no, the, the Resolutions 27 to 27 to 28 are, both resolutions are for Phase 1B of the FMP. So as we did with all of the schematic designs for, the board had to approve them before sending them to SED. So we're still in Phase 1 of the FMP.
Okay, all right. So when does Phase 2 begin?
We do not have legislative approval for Phase 2. We hope to, Superintendent would be presenting to the board, I think, mid-October, the update to the master plan. We need that to start the legislative process for Phase 2, which we hope to be early January.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a final clarification, we don't know when, I'm looking at the finance, so once we have the financial analysis, then we will be advising the board in terms of the, the timeline and all the aspect of this project.
And question on 233, that's Hart Street, am I correct if I read this resolution correctly?
Yep, yep.
Is there another building around, or in some way can they beautify, can that building be beautified?
As a matter of fact, Commissioner, part of the deal we actually struck, this is why this resolution is coming late, is we have the landlord doing about $300, $350,000 worth of work inside of the building to, to improve the appearance, carpeting, painting, changing rails, a number of things, which is included.
And they changed that paint color from beige to something else hot?
Some people like pink.
Yeah, whatever, man, I mean, it's just, it looks like an institution.
So there's, we've asked them to about, and they've agreed, actually, to do about $300, $350,000 worth of work to the building.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Commissioner?
That's it.
Thank you. Anything else on Resolutions 218 to 236, before we go into executive session?
Oh, you know what, I do have some questions, media questions, uh, policy questions that we're going to be voting on.
Okay, that's, which one?
224.
Yes.
I see in, you know, in the second paragraph, that we talk about really welcoming the, the media, we really don't. So how, how do we really honor what our policies say? Because we really don't welcome them, you know? So is there a way that we can make sure that this is being implemented, that, you know, they also become, and as I read this, they also come a strategic partner as well, you know? Because they're going to communicate to, to the public, you know, what, what we do. So, you know, I just. So, you know, I just, the policy is fine, but we, we don't welcome them very well.
I think the TV media is welcomed very well. I would agree with you, I think maybe sometimes there have been issues with print, the print media a little bit.
So, so I think that we need to develop a better kind of relationship, if, I mean, to abide by and align with our policy.
Yeah, I think maybe we can invite them all to the distillery for chicken wings.
That may not be a bad thing to do.
Mixer type thing.
Yeah, a little mixture, a mixer, yeah. That may not be a bad thing to do. Because there's been this kind of discord, are you from the media? Yeah, okay. Am I on point with what I'm saying? I mean, oh, you're new? Oh, okay, all right. We don't welcome the media very well.
Good job not answering that question.
So, you know, I just want us to honor that better, and that may be a thought, that we have some kind of mixer, you know, with the media. And then going to 225, about the, my concern is, and I wanted to ask the chairperson, Cruz, about the removing of the review, the entire manual at least once every three years to ensure that the manual is updated. I guess I would not want to get that eliminated, because I think that that, there's so many things that we do that change a lot. And I think that I would want to make sure that we are reviewing the manual to make sure that it's meeting the needs of our district, particularly since, you know, things are changing so rapidly. And so, I'd like, if, Mr. President, if the chairman of the Policy Committee can respond to that, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, well, what the, what the language says on that, it says it, I'm sorry, I didn't have it up here.
Yep.
At least once every three years. I mean, that wouldn't, what that would restrict you to do is that you'd have to do it every, every three years, you'd have to review the policy manual. Well, as you know, because you, you've worked on the policy manual, the policy manual has to be reviewed almost every single month, you know, so it's a constant review process.
Okay.
So what the, what the idea was, and again, it was just trying to clean up some of our policies, that it just doesn't make any sense to say, we'll review it every three, three years, if it's a constant review process. But it was just trying to clean it up. And you'll notice with the other ones as well, that we took that annual review process out as well.
It sort of, it sort of, it sort of means that we, the committee and the board will never review it, if we take that language. I think that somehow we need to have some language to say that we're going to review it. If we take the language out, we may never get around to, to doing this work that I think is, you know, due diligence work.
Or maybe the other way to go about it is to add language that says that it's a continuing process to review the policy manual so that we maintain it as up-to-date as possible. So we just wanted to get away from the one-year, two-year, three-year kind of thing, but we can certainly take a look at that, there's, that's not written in stone.
So can we table this, this particular resolution in order to have conversation around that?
Sure.
I would not want that to be eliminated, maybe every five years or something to that regard, so that we make sure that the board is.
But that's the issue, you don't want to put every two, three, or four, or five, because then what will happen is that people will wait five years to review.
And it wasn't doing it more regularly. The idea is to do it more regularly.
It's a constant process to review the policy.
Yeah, but there's, whatever we decide, there needs to be some language in here that speaks to it.
Right, and I agree with you.
So that we don't become irresponsible.
I can withdraw that, and then we can go over and put some additional language in there that speaks to a constant kind of, a constant review of the policy manual, put that language in there, so that whoever's heading a policy or on the policy committee knows enough that they're continually reviewing.
Sure, sure.
So we can, yeah, we can do that.
Do we need to offer up a, a?
I can withdraw it. Just consider withdrawal.
So you're going to withdraw Resolution Number, what number is that, Commissioner?
225, 225.
All right, so we'll resubmit 225 with that.
Would that be?
That's Policy 2460. Okay?
All right, that one is withdrawn. We'll consider it next meeting with the amended language. So anything else on 218 through 236, with the exceptions that I mentioned earlier? And you know the exceptions I mentioned?
What do we have?
Anything else? All right.
I would like to say, in terms of the, policy, the code of conduct, that, and as I looked at, I think the only thing that really is of concern is the removal of the social media, things that they had, that their students have, and, I don't know, I think that's going to be a huge fight. I think we have to figure out a way in which we do that in a very gingerly kind, kind of way, because everybody has those, that equipment, whether it's iPods, or, you know, this, this, what we have here, the, these iPads. I just think it's got to be a way in which we do it in a very respectful way, because people, I could see our suspension rate going up as a result of, you know, teachers trying to take these, these tools away from our young people, so.
Thank you.
That's it.
One more question. Commissioner Cruz?
Resolution 223, it's on page 58. Mr. Superintendent, can?
218, please, Mr.?
Yeah, Special Education.
Yeah, page 58, 20. I remember seeing an email from the staff indicating a whole list of people who are part of the Special Ed Committee, and these folks are the sort of coordinators kind of thing?
Yes.
Yes. My concern, when I was going down that rather extensive list, there must have been about, I don't know, 25 people on that list, right?
Can you ask, come to the mic, Ms.?
Don't trip, careful. Yeah, so when I, when I viewed that very extensive list of, I don't know, 20, 25 names, I, I was struck by the fact that I didn't see one that I could quickly identify as Latino. Now, that doesn't mean anything, because we know that sometimes, you know, the last names are a little, sometimes, you gotta be careful when you say that, by last name.
You got Manos.
Right, but I just want to make sure that there's enough Latino representation on that, because there are a lot of issues that I know that people have come up to me about with regard to having a lot of Latino parents who are very confused about the process, who don't understand it, who feel that they're just not getting the kind of assistance they need to get. So, and, and obviously, you know that by having staff there and that kind of support, that, you know, folks, you know, will get supported in that way. But again, I'm making a broad statement here, and I stand to be corrected, no problem.
Can you just help me understand, so part of your concern is feedback?
I didn't see any Latino names on the list.
So the, not the list that you have, none, the one that purely?
I don't see it here, unless, unless, and we can talk about Mannan, but unless, this list, and also this very extensive list that I received in an email, I didn't see a lot of Latino names there either.
Okay. So can I ask for permission to, to get back to you about that? Because I was just looking at the list as far as translators, but I want to get a better understanding of what your feedback you're getting, so I can work with the department. So is it in CSE meetings, is it in explaining the policies not being translated for them?
Well, this policy speaks to the setting up of the, it's, you're appointing a committee on Special Education.
Yes.
Right? And, and so I guess in that case, this is your committee, and I'm not seeing a Latino name there. But I also, going back, saw this, that other list, long list of people who are part of the, the Special Activity Process.
Yes.
And didn't see folks there either, so. You can get back to me.
Yes, I will.
That's just a concern that I have.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Recognized, thank you.
Anything else on 218 to 236, with the exception of the ones that were excluded? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
abstain from 218.
One abstention, any other, any other noes?
Is number 230 in that packet?
Yes, it is.
I vote no on 230.
Oh, I'm sorry, 230 is maybe?
No, 230 is executive session, remember?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. That is all, I entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Before you adjourn, I have to make a comment here. I just received Policies Number, Resolutions Number 237 and 238 90 minutes before this board meeting occurred, and, and I just need to tell you that I don't, to quote Commissioner White, I don't think it was intentional, I'm going to ascribe the oversight to the fact that I'm new to the district. But I will tell you that, in my opinion, as your general counsel, I have an obligation to inform you that if you go into executive session to discuss this policy, you will probably be in violation of the open meetings law, because I have looked at the Section 105 and the enumerated exceptions, and I just don't see how any of these fit with respect to this policy. So I'm just giving you that information because it's really important that you know that.
Yeah, I think you are, I think you are absolutely correct, and the only thing that we'll be talking in executive session as it relates to those policy are any specific individuals that we might be talking about, but we will be voting on that policy, and any comments will be in open session after, after we're done with the executive session. Yep, thank you.
My man.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to go into executive session, so move. Is there a second?
Love it.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, you guys have it.
[laughing]
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 [laughing]